And we are going to call this zoning board to order. First, I would like to do a roll call of the board. Rob Shaw.
Present.
Jack Courier.
Jack Courier is present.
Nick Knarkis.
Present.
JP Boucher.
Present.
Steve Lionell.
Present.
Jay Minkara.
Present.
And Mary Ellen McKay, also present. Is there any other board member that is either on the phone? Is Estafia present? Okay. No. I don't think I've forgotten anybody. Okay, I have something I need to read. And so, this has been given to me by the city. This needs to be read at all meetings. And so, I shall begin. This is Mary Ellen McKay, Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment. And this is the April 28th zoning board meeting. As Chair of the zoning board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by Governor Sununu as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized to meet. We have their mic.
That's JP doing that. Wow, there we go.
Okay. Uh, okay. Now, it's back. It's gone.
Somebody have another line open? It's JP again, who's not muted. And he's got feedback.
I just muted him.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are, one, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are video conferencing utilizing WebEx through the city's IT department for this electronic meeting. All members of the zoning board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen into this meeting through dialing the following number. 978-990-5298 and using the password 273974. Public access to this meeting is also provided via WebEx, and a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website. The meeting can be streamed through the city's website. HTTPS backslash backslash WWW.NASHUANH.gov/318/CTV on Nashua's community link. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. Providing, two, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessity of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings and where applicable, notice to a butters. Instructions have also been provided to the City of Nashua's website at WWW.NASHUANH.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. Additionally, a link to the public WebEx access for this meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website, WWW.NASHUANH.gov. Number three, providing a mechanism for the public to alert to the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. Number four, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present the applicant's case, followed by questions by the board. We will allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition before the board deliberates and determines an outcome. Normally, the board utilizes a light timer, which will not be available. However, the board and all participants should endeavor to comply with the timeframes of 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the board are appearing remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the board may contact the planning department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if you are unable to use WebEx. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations were submitted in advance of the meeting so that they may be displayed for remote access viewing. Real-time public comment can be addressed via video to the board utilizing the WebEx virtual meeting software for remote access. Real-time comments via audio will be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the board utilizing the WebEx virtual meeting software for remote access. The public is also encouraged to submit their comments via email to the Planning Department email, planning@NASHUANH.gov, or by mail. Please make sure to include your name, address, and comments. Letters should be addressed to the Planning Department, Post Office Box 2019, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03061. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Zoning board meetings will be held electronically until it has been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The zoning board, the planning department, and city staff thanks you for your understanding and patience during this difficult time. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. And I will also introduce staff as well as other ZBA members. And I will read the agenda and into the record at this time. And Mrs. McKay will ask each applicant, representative, or individual required to be at the hearing to state their name and address, and if there is anyone in the room with them during the presentation. Now, when we went over and took the roll call, we neglected to say if anybody was in the room with us. And so, I will now go back and do this. Rob, is there anyone in the room with you?
No, there is not.
Jack Courier, are you alone or is there anyone in the room with you?
This is Jack Courier, and I am alone.
Nick Knarkis, are you in the room alone or is there anyone with you?
I'm alone.
JP Boucher, are you alone or is there anyone in the room with you?
I am alone.
Steve Lionell, are you alone or is there anyone in the room with you?
I am alone.
Jay Minkara, are you alone or is there anyone in the room with you? Could you put your mic on, please, Jay?
Sorry, I'm alone.
Thank you. And Mary Ellen McKay, I'm here with my little, almost two-year-old Shih Tzu. So Beth is in the room with me. And Estafia Boris, have you entered the room? Still no Estafia, so we will mark her as not present. I also want to introduce Carter Falk, the Deputy Planning Director for the city. Carter, are you in the room alone or is anyone with you?
I am present, and I am alone.
Okay. And we also have Kate Forrier from the city. And Kate, if you would let us know if you're present, if you're alone, or is there anyone else?
This is Kate. I am present, and there is no one else in the room with me.
And there are other people here from administration? I see. Do I need to also introduce them? Or can they introduce themselves?
I think they're just recording the meeting.
Okay.
I don't know if they're watching it. I think they're just recording, and they keep a line open.
Okay. All right. I think we're ready to go to our first case.
This is McKay.
Yes.
This is Carter Falk. Are you going to announce who will be voting on this case?
Oh, yeah, we have. Thank you for that. Voting on this case will be myself, will be Steve Lionell, will be JP Boucher, will be Jack Courier, and will be Rob Shaw. We have five regular members and two alternate members. Jay Minkara and Nick Knarkis are our alternates. And if one of the regular members has to recuse themselves, then we will have one of our alternates vote. Okay. And now for the first case.
McKay?
Yes?
This is Rob. I think it's also worth noting that the alternates do participate actively in the meeting and in the hearing, just not voting specifically.
That's correct. They do. They are active participants in the hearing. They are entitled and able to ask questions to the applicants and participate in our public meeting as well as the public hearing. So thank you for bringing that back to my attention, Rob. Are we ready for the first case? Okay. Case number one is Juan Taveras and... Yeah. I'm going to destroy this poor person's first and last name. Michaelina Oriach at 4 Kanata Drive. They're the owners. It's Sheet E Lot 972, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-112 to work within the 40-foot critical wetland buffer of Lincoln Brook to construct a 10-foot by 20-foot shed and modify fence locations. It's in the R9 zone, Ward 1. Is Juan here?
Yes, how are you doing? My name is Juan Taveras. I am the owner of the property. You did a pretty good job with the name. Thank you so much with the names.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hello to everyone. Yes, I know that you have a package of the mitigation, which we will follow and which the Conservation Committee has reviewed, I believe extensively. So hopefully, we can get it approved, and we will follow all the commitments that we've made to hopefully improve everything that, as it stands now, we will do improvements on everything that we have committed to. So that is what we... That is what I have to say at the moment. Any questions, I'm willing to answer, of course.
Okay. Yeah, I... And at this point, I can't see any pictures, so I don't know if anyone has any questions. I think at this point, I know we have a letter, but I'll get to that at a different point in time. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant at this point? Carter, is anybody raising their hand? Is any... I can't see pictures, so this makes it really difficult.
Hold on. A lot of people here look at.
There is the hand button in the attendees list. If you open that, and I don't know what happens if does it... Like, I'm going to raise my hand here. I don't know if it shows up under Participants.
Yeah, I can't see whether your hand is raised or not.
Can you see the participants list?
I can see the participants list, but I don't see your hand up.
I don't know what it would look like.
Yeah, I do. Unless you just wave your hand or put your hand up by your face, I would then see that now because I can now see you, Steve. I just don't have, like, across the top or anywhere on this screen, a visual of all the participants.
On the bottom of the screen, there's a blue circle with a... Looks like a person's head in it, in the bottom center of the screen, that would bring up the participants list.
Oh, it just made it go. Yeah, I see the participants list. But that doesn't show me the pictures.
No, no, it wouldn't show you the pictures. It shows you the names, and then there should be a little symbol for a raised hand. I'm clicking mine on and off. I don't know.
I don't see that. But I don't have the host capacity, so I can't see it.
So this is Jay. You have... I'm listed as JM, and I did... I also raised my hand, and I can see it on the participant list on the right-hand side. I'm not sure if anybody else can.
No, you can only see your own.
Okay.
You can't see Steve's either.
I don't see a whole list. I just see everybody's face at the bottom.
No, I see a list. I don't see faces. I almost wish I did.
Steve, did you just raise your hand again?
I can presently, Mary.
I'm clicking the button on and off.
Okay.
No, I don't see it.
Yes, so I'm not seeing Steve, so you must be right. I'm only seeing my own.
Yeah.
I can presently see.
From our test the other day, I believe only the host sees the raised and not the presenter.
Only the host can see it.
Yeah.
So Kate, I think right now the one that sees hands raised.
Madam Chair, I can see hands raised. So at this time, I will say that Jack Courier has his hand raised, and Jay Minkara has his hand raised.
Okay. Then, I'm going to, you know, I don't know who came in first. So Jay, can you ask your question?
And so, I was only going to make a comment on the application, so if Mr. Courier has a question, I would defer to him first.
Okay. Jack, do you have a question?
Well, I... It's more of a comment, but since I'm speaking now, I'll say that from our practice session, it was only the host I agree with, Mr. Shaw. So we're going to be reliant on Kate here to notify when a hand is raised, and that it seems to be working now. So I don't have a question on this application, but I did have my hand raised to say that I think the application... I had no questions on it. I think it speaks for itself, and I believe the wetland criteria is spoken for in the application and with the CONCOM letter. And so, it's not a question, but that's a comment, and that's all I have to say at this point.
Okay, thank you. And Jay?
Similarly, although we're not in the deliberative portion, to be honest, I raised it just for the experiment, to see if it's going to work. But to that end, I would just add that I think it's a reasonable use. What's proposed is typical for residential use. It's very consistent with the neighborhood, and we do have Conservation Commission. The visitors are met. I think it's a very straightforward application.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Taveras, and I will now ask if there's anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this application.
Thank you.
Kate, are you seeing anything?
You're muted, Kate, if you're...
My apologies, Madam Chair. I am looking through the list of participants, and I see no hands being raised. And I have the chat bar open, and I have not received any messages.
Okay. And then, at this point in time, I will note, since we are speaking in the affirmative, that we did receive a letter from the Conservation Commission. And should I be reading this letter into the record?
This is McKay. I'm bad, I'm sure. I think you can just say that we received a letter of support from the Conservation Commission dated February 11, 2020, that on their February 4 meeting, CONCOM voted for support with seven stipulations of approval. That should be fine.
Okay. So I'll just refer back to what Carter said, and we can put that into the record, that we did receive the affirmative letter dated February 2020 with a list of seven criteria that needs to be met. The applicant so stated that all criteria would be met. Is there anybody here who wants to speak in opposition? I can see pictures, and I don't see any hands raised. So what I'm going to do, unless I'm stopped, is I'm going to close a public hearing on this, and I'm going to go and open the public meeting and ask the board for any deliberations. And I think what I'm going to do is probably just randomly ask, but I'm going to go down the list and ask each one of you for your interpretations and impressions. Mr. Shaw?
I am in support of the case. I think it's straightforward, and I think as long as the adherence is made to the CONCOM stipulations, I think this action is... meets the criteria of the request, and I'm in support.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
This is Jack Courier. I am in support of this application, and I believe the criteria is met, and as well as the nine wetland special conditions. Obviously, the Conservation Commission has approved it. I typically place a lot of emphasis or reliability on their full review, which they've done. So I find support for this application as proposed.
Thank you. Mr. Knarkis?
I'm also in support.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boucher?
I'm also in support of the application. I think it speaks for itself, and I agree with all the board numbers at this point.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lionell?
I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara?
Support the application.
Thank you. And I also, Mary Ellen McKay, am in favor of this application. So now, I will entertain a motion. And if one of the members could raise your hand, I can see the pictures, so I would be able to see who would like to make a motion. Mr. Boucher?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Juan Taveras and Miguel Lina Oriach of 4 Kanata Drive, Sheet E Lot 972, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-112, work within the 40-foot critical wetland buffer of Lincoln Brook to construct a 10-foot by 20-foot shed and modify fence locations located in the R9 zone, Ward 1. We find that it is listed in the table of uses. We find it will not create undue traffic congestion or undue legal care protection safety. We find it will not overload public water drains, or sewer, or other municipal system. We find that the special regulations are fulfilled. We find that we will not interfere the integrity of the out-of-town to the neighborhood, the defense, and the health, laws, and welfare of residents. There is a Conservation Commission recommendation for approval of February 11 with seven stipulations to be followed. And with that, I'll make the motion again to approve the special exception.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Do I have a second? I see Mr. Shaw with his hand raised. You have a second by Mr. Shaw. And I will take a roll call vote. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes aye or yes?
Mr. Courier?
Jack Courier votes yes.
Mr. Knarkis?
Oh, this is McKay?
Oh, I'm sorry. I... Excuse me. Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes yes.
Mr. Lionell?
Steve Lionell votes yes.
And Mary Ellen McKay also votes yes. Congratulations, Mr. Taveras. Your application has been approved. You will have 30 days from today, so please wait for... Someone could have an appeal, or you could appeal this decision. And after that, any questions, any comments, any concerns, please contact Mr. Carter Falk.
Okay, thank you so much. Really appreciate everything. Thank you.
Mr. Falk?
Thank you, Mr. Taveras. You're free to log off now, unless you want to listen to the rest of it.
No, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe, and thank you very much for everything. My first... It's my first time having a meeting with everybody. Really a pleasure to meet everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe. Thank you, Kate.
Mr. Courier's raised his hand. Thank you, Mr. Taveras.
Take care, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Yes, this is Jack Courier, and I just wanted to say that I've captured the vote and the reasons for granting in the electronic minutes here that I will... I have saved, and I will save after each case, so it won't get lost, and I'll send it to Kate after the meeting. So I just wanted to let the folks know that that's what I've... Where I'm maintaining the records. Now, I might let it get back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Courier. Okay, we will now proceed with case number two on the agenda. Case number two is... Case number two is... He's now flipping pages here. Is SAT Junior Limited Partnership as the owner J. and K. Dolan LLC applicant, 76 Northeastern Boulevard, Unit 28, Sheet C, Lot 2025, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, parentheses number 102, to allow an esthetician office in unit number 28. It's the PI Zone Ward 9. Is the applicant present? Who will be presenting this case?
Hold on, hold on one second.
It appears Mr. Dolan's present.
You should be outside now. Mr. Dolan, you can introduce yourself.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. My name is Joel Dolan. I'm the representative of J. and K. Dolan LLC. We own the actual physical structure at 76 Northeastern Boulevard. SAT Junior Limited Partnership is the landowner.
Okay. If you would like to present your case to the board, you are free to do so at this point.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Good evening, members of the board. I can say I've been in many of these in some of municipalities, and it does get a little easier as you go through. And Joel will be doing these for some time. I do just want to have one point of clarification, though, on the paperwork that I have that I'm certain is in your packet. It said that we, that the structure is only 1,200 square feet. It's actually two stories. So I believe it's closer to 2,400 square feet. And the actual amount of space that we would be renting to the esthetician is less than 200 square feet. So it's only a small portion of the structure. But I'll go ahead and present as well. As you know, if you're familiar with that, that development, that whole area, Northeastern Boulevard, is, it's kind of a mixed-use area. Boston Village is right across the street from there. There's a gym across the street. Within that structure, there's five buildings. In that parking lot, there's a separate building, which looks like it was done by the same developer, very, very similar architecture and building style. It's close to Northeastern Boulevard. It's mixed-use within that facility as is. We work our buildings next to a dentist office. There are other dentist offices in there. Mental health facilities, looks like some computer repair. So I believe there's a gay clinic, a rehab clinic at the, towards the front, towards facing Northeastern Boulevard, an outpatient facility. So it is already a mixed-use, multipurpose complex, which we don't think adding this business would change any character of the neighborhood. And we feel that it would fit right in, as far as parking. It would be an appointment-based only, so any traffic coming in and out of there would be controlled. There's plenty of parking spaces, as you can see. Parking's not an issue. There's 126 spaces in for that area. And I would imagine that, most with the employee and the owner and the renter, the esthetician and one or two clients, client would be in, and the client would possibly be coming and going, at most, depending on when, how the appointments are staggered. So I don't foresee parking being an issue. As far as any tax on the city municipal services, it shouldn't be any hardship on that as well. And you can see in the packet that I received, that I'm sure in front of you as well, is that a similar application was presented in 1994 to the ZBA, requesting that a whole building to be used as a beauty salon, a personal service business. And that was approved at that time, with the exception of, it didn't want any retail products, any hair products, to be sold out of the facility. I don't anticipate that my tenant would be selling any product out of there. It would just be to perform the esthetician services. As far as public safety, there's no public safety issues to that. There's plenty access to the facility. It's wide open. There's easy access. Exit out of the facility, and plenty of line of sight. There's plenty of lighting at night. Shouldn't be any interference with any neighbors. You'll also see in your packet that SAT Junior Limited Partnership has approved our application. So I know you have a big agenda. I don't have any more than that renting a small amount of space to a small business owner would not impact the area. It would actually benefit the area in that it would occupy the space, as opposed to having spaces, which could decrease property values. I'll answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. And now, does any one of the board have any questions?
Madam Chair, I am seeing no hands raised in the participants tab.
Okay, fine. Then, thank you, Mr. Dolan. And I will now, your part right now at this particular moment is, okay, I'm going to ask if there's anyone else here in support of this application. Do we see anything?
Madam Chair, I am seeing no hands raised among the participants.
Okay. And do we have any opposition?
I am seeing none.
Okay. Then, seeing no opposition, and there were no other participants speaking in favor, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And ask, as I go, Mr. Shaw, do you have any comments, questions?
No, I think I'm in support of this application. It's a very limited use. And I think it will fit into the character of what else is going on in this overall property. And so I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
This is Jack Courier. In short, I'm in support of this application from my sidewalk of that area, Unit 28. I concur with the presentation by, I think, Mr. Dolan, in that it's really no impact. I certainly have my attention to any, you know, rent, you know, folks that thought it would impact, who worked there or worked nearby, but we didn't hear anything. And so I believe that it's just a testimony was tonight, that it's no impact, and I'm favorable to this use area.
Thank you. Mr. Knakis?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm also in favor of the application. I think it fits into that park, and I think it also is indicative or is consistent with what's kind of going on in the North Eastern Boulevard. So I am in support of the application.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lionel?
This is Steve Lionel. I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara?
I do feel that the proposed use is consistent with the character of the area, so I support the application.
Thank you very much. And the Chair, Mary Ellen McKay, is also in support of the application. At this time, I would entertain a motion. And if one of the board members, Mr. Lionel?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, SAT Junior Limited Partnership. Applicant is J. and K. Dolan LLC. Address is 76 Northeastern Boulevard, Unit 28, Sheet C, Lot 2025, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Item 102, to allow an esthetician office in Unit 28. This is in the PI Zone, Park Industrial Zone Ward 9. The board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. There are no real special conditions, but it's, the use variance is required. And the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other reasonable method. The board finds this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, especially as a previous similar variance was granted in the past. We don't believe it will adversely affect the property values and surrounding parcels. We find that it is not contributing to public interest, and substantial justice would be served. So I make a motion to approve this use variance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lionel. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw? Thank you. Now I will take a roll call vote. Mr. Shaw?
I'm in support of, I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
This is Jack Courier. I voted in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
Boucher is yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
Steve Lionel votes yes.
Thank you. And Mary Ellen McKay also votes yes. That's five votes in the affirmative. Mr. Dolan, congratulations. You, your variance has been approved. You will have your 30-day waiting period. If you have any questions, or there are any concerns, please contact Mr. Falk in the planning or the Community Development Department. And thank you for coming. And as Mr. Falk said, whoops, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, Ms. McKay, I just, I think to clarify, just, the 30 days, there's not a need to wait. It's just about to get a field window, so somebody can start following the granted variance or... So I think I just want to clarify that. So if there's any concern or confusion, that it's a possibility that a, that a rehearing request could happen in 30 days. But somebody can still go forward right now.
You can, Mr. Dolan. Go forward. Somebody in the public, one of the others, anybody has the option and opportunity within 30 days to appeal our decision, however. It is your right.
That's understandable. But I think with the governor's state of emergency, I don't believe that that's a central business right now with barber shops and other than that. So I don't foresee her practicing at this time until that order is lifted or adjusted by the governor.
Okay, fine. Then, thank you. And Mr. Dolan, thank for bringing us in front of us. And you are free to click out and exit.
Madam Chair, thank you, Kate and Carter. Thank you for your help. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we still good to go, Jack?
Yeah, this is Jack. I just wanted to say as a clerk, I captured that last vote with the five full-time members and saved it. So ready to proceed on my end.
Thank you very much. We will proceed to case number three. Which is... Sorry, too far. Case number... Oh, okay. Case number three. The owner is Larry Kittle. The address is 78 Amherst Street and L. Putnam Street, Sheet 62, Lots 83 and 85, requesting the following variances. One, from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum lot area, proposed lots 62-83, 24,782 square feet existing after proposed lot line relocation, 37,337 square feet required to construct three two-family buildings, and two variants from Land Use Code Section 190-09, parentheses C, to construct new driveway at 78 Amherst Street facing Putnam Street, within 50 feet of the intersection of Amherst Street and Putnam Street. 41.8 feet proposed, approved by ZBA on 7/28/15 and 5/22/18. Permit never applied for. This is the RB Zone Ward 4. Mr. Kittle, are you present?
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is Chad Brandon with Fieldstone Land Consultants, and I'll be representing Mr. Kittle this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, again, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brandon. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants, and I'll be representing Mr. Kittle. We are before you tonight, as was previously outlined, requesting two variances, one for density and land area, and the other for the location of a driveway on tax map parcel 62-85. Parcel 6285 has a physical address of 78 Amherst Street, and is located at the intersection of Amherst and Putnam Streets. The property currently consists of .061 acres, or 2,651 square feet, and is currently occupied by a single-family house with associated site improvements. Parcel 6283 surrounds 6285, and has frontage on Amherst, Putnam, and Prescott Streets. This property consists of .606 acres, or 26,395 square feet, and is currently a vacant undeveloped lot. Doning for the two properties is urban residence, which has a minimum lot requirement of 6,000 square feet with 50 feet of road frontage. And my client is proposing to develop parcel 6283 with three residential duplex buildings with associated site improvements. And this area of the city is primarily developed into multifamily housing, so this development will be in harmony with the surroundings. The ordinance, as I stated before, requires 6,000 square feet for each unit in the RB Zone. Or the required area would be 36,000 square feet, I believe, for the duplex units. Since the proposed lot will be 24,782 square feet in size, we are seeking variance for that, prevent the construction of the duplexes as proposed. We did submit with the application a density exhibit plan. This plan has been presented to the board in the past to secure some variances on the subject property. And what this basically shows is that the surrounding areas are, in fact, more dense, if you will, than what we're proposing most. And what I mean by that is, along Putnam Street, across the road from the subject property, the average per unit lot size is about one unit per 2,000 square feet. The blue shaded area shows lots that are comparable in density to what we're proposing on the site. And then the yellow shaded areas actually show lots that are significantly more dense than what we're proposing, all the way down to, you know, some of them are one unit per 1500 square feet. The intent of this plan really is just to show that this density that we're this density that we're proposing is very common in the neighborhood and is, you know, certainly the proposal is, it would be in harmony with the surrounding areas. The proposal for parcel 6285 is to, is to, excuse me, enlarge the property and address safety issues with that subject property. The improvements will consist of executing a lot line adjustment with parcel 6283 so that the existing driveway along Amherst Street could be relocated to Putnam Street. The final area of this property would be about 4,264 square feet in size and the relocation of the existing driveway onto Putnam Street does require a variance because of its proximity to the intersection of Amherst and Putnam. But it would create a much safer situation for people backing out. Putnam Street is certainly a street with far less traffic. It's a one directional road. And it, it would be a huge improvement for people, you know, backing out onto the public road system. So we, we do believe that's a significant improvement, not only for the subject property, but likely for people who travel along Amherst Street. And what we're proposing to do is construct that new driveway wide enough so that it would provide additional parking, so two parking spaces. You know, would be provided and then we would remove the existing driveway off of Amherst Street and reclaim that area with, with yard. The enlarging this lot would also allow the property to have a little bit more of a yard area, which would certainly benefit the current and future residents of that particular single-family home. So it is worth noting, and I think everybody probably saw that this property does have a fair amount of history before the Nashville zoning board. I would like to touch on that and just give, you know, a brief synopsis or brief summary of how the plan that we have before you has, has come to be. Back in 2015, my client purchased this property from the city of Nashville. And in July of 2015, we received approvals on variances to relocate the driveway that we just talked about on parcel 6285. And we also received approvals for variances that allowed my client to subdivide parcel 6283 into three lots with duplexes on each of the lots. So it was the same density. It would have been a total of six, six units. Later in 2015, my client discovered that there was asbestos on the site. And unfortunately, it was found that the, you know, he wasn't notified during the transaction. So it was, it wasn't disclosed properly, but more of a, you know, an unfortunate situation was that the plan that we got approved previously really didn't fit well layout-wise with the asbestos on the site. And what I mean by that is the units were located closer to Putnam Street where there's a fair amount of asbestos. And we had a common drive coming off of Prescott Street at the time, which serviced those three homes. And the goal since then has been to try to construct a parking lot and really cap the asbestos areas as part of the mitigation. And so in May of 2018, we filed a new plan with the city to seek two triplex units on this property. The proposal consisted of subdividing the subject lot 6283 into two lots and developing each lot into triplex units. So again, we're talking about six total units on the property. The variance for this application was also approved back in May of 2018. But similar to the original process, this, this process had some form of education with it too, and that was primarily that construction of triplexes follows a different building code. And so the build to construct those would be much more expensive. And then also through that time, my client was was being educated on what the costs were to actually appropriately mitigate and address the asbestos that was located on site. So due to the increased costs, there was another revision made in November of 2019 in an attempt to address increased costs. Another application was filed with the ZBA. That particular application consisted of seven units on the subject property. And I think many of the board members may recall that that was denied back in, in, in November. So that really brings us to tonight. And what we have before you tonight is somewhat reverted. It's kind of going back to the original plan where we have three duplexes. We're no longer proposing to subdivide the property into three lots. So there's not as many variances with this proposal as with the original one. But this plan and the layout is consistent with what would be required to adequately address the asbestos, which is we would still have parking along Putnam Street. We'd be capping good portion of that asbestos area. We have one singular driveway off of Putnam Street. So there'd you know, be certainly be less congestion and, and turning movements onto the road. And that, that really brings us to date. I just, you know, in going through the application and number of minutes that were attached, I felt that it would, you know, might be a good idea just to bring everybody up to speed as to how we, how we got here and how things came to be. So with that, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have, or I certainly can go through the criteria if, if the board feels as though that would be appropriate at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brandon. Kate, if you could do me a favor and just minimize your, the documents for right now so that I can see the members, so that I see that Mr. Lionel has his hand up. Thank you very much, Kate. Mr. Lionel?
Thank you. In the 2019 presentation, one of the, the issues was that some of the units would have sprinklers and some would not. What is the situation for this plan?
Well, it's my understanding that with the duplex units, they may not have to be sprinkled. But they, we would ultimately have to go through the review, you know, for successful this evening before the planning board. And that would consist of, of going through a fire department review. And certainly we would have to address any concerns that they have. I know triplex units for sure have to be sprinkled, so I suspect that's probably what was presented at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I do see Jack Courier's hand raised in the participants tab, and I just saw Rob Shaw raise his hand.
Yeah, I saw Rob too, and I see Jack. Mr. Carrier?
Yes, a question for Mr. Brandon. And if, if you could just clarify the difference between this plan and what I would say is the last approved plan by the ZBA, which was two plans ago. Hopefully that makes sense because two plans ago it was approved and then the last one was not. So if we go back two plans, what's the delta between this and that plan?
Sure. Very good question. So the last plan that was approved by this board consisted of two triplex units. So it was still six units in total. And those two triplex units were each on their own lot. So we were doing a two lot subdivision of the subject property. But the orientation was the same. We had parking along Putnam Street with a singular access. And the board at the time felt that, you know, it was a reasonable layout and a reasonable proposal. It just, as I stated, the, the triplex construction falls under a different code. And there's, there's, it's more expensive to go that avenue. So the only difference, I guess, just to sum it up, the number of units is the same, the layout is the same. There's just three duplexes versus two triplex.
Okay, thank you for answering the question. This is Jack Courier. I'm all set.
Mr. Shaw?
That was essentially the exact same question I was going to ask. I'm going to say that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Okay, hearing none. I would like to ask, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Madam Chair, I am seeing no hands raised. This is Kate. I am seeing no questions in chat either.
Okay. Is there anyone here with any opposition to this plan?
Madam Chair, I see none.
Okay. Seeing there is no opposition, no one in favor, no one else to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Does any one of the board members have any questions, concerns? Do you want me to go through the list as I've been doing and ask for your comments? Which probably is a little bit easier. Mr. Kinarkis, we're going to lead off with you this time.
Ah, you know, overall, I just say I think it's a substantially improved application over the last time. I, I think the applicant heard the comments and the concerns. So I, I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Kinarkis?
I'm also in support of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I am in support, especially since it is ostensibly very similar to the one that we did approve in 2018. And I believe it continues to actually need the same characteristics and is appropriate as what this is board approved then and even previously. But yes, I'm in support.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also support the applications for the reasons that Mr. Shaw just stated.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lionel?
I, well, I continue to be troubled by the the, the fact that sprinklers aren't all, are required in the duplexes, but they were in, in the triplexes, but I can't find it in myself to draw support. So I'll, I'll say I support the application.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Carrier?
For the reasons stated by my fellow board members, I'm in support of this application. And just as a reminder, if somebody's going to be making a motion, there's two variance requests on this application. And so if somebody's going to be making a motion, if they could clarify for the first or the second or both together, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Carrier. And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I too, like Mr. Lionel, had those tweaks of trepidation. However, cannot find a reason to object. And so I will find in support of this application, or I'm inclined to be in support. Is there somebody who would like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher?
I'm going to make a motion, Mr. Courier. I, I think for, for both of them at the same time, I think we've got support for both. So I'll make a motion for both at the same time. Is that, is that okay?
Yes, that's fine. And if I assume then that your criteria or your rationale is going to be for both, so I'll be typing up the same rationale for the first and second. And so guard your head with your motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Larry Kittle of 78 Amherst Street. He's the owner. And L Putnam Street, Sheet 62 Lots 83 and 85 requesting the following variance. First one, from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3 for a minimum lot area proposed lot 62-83. 24,782 square feet existing after proposed lot line relocation. square feet required to construct a three, three, just construct three two-family buildings. And the second area variance from land use code section 190-209, Section C to construct a new driveway at 78 Amherst Street facing Putnam Street within the 50-foot, within 50 feet of the intersection of Amherst Street and Putnam Street. It's, it's 41.8 feet proposed. It was approved originally by the ZBA on 7/20/15 and 5/22/18. Permit was never applied for. We have the zone, Ward 4. And again, this, this is a, this postphone from an earlier meeting this year of 3/24/20. We find that the area variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. Given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other methods reasonably feasible, but applicant to pursue other than the air warrants. I will refer to the, not that the previous application, but before, same rationale that was there. I think what we found was it was reasonable for the amount of units on the property. Special conditions were obviously, one of the biggest ones was the fact that asbestos was found on the property. And they were trying to place the parking lot in a position where there was minimal, minimal interference or impact to the asbestos area. As far as the driveway is concerned, I think that that is a net gain benefit for all the, all of us in the city, taking that driveway off of busy Amherst Street and moving it over to Putnam Street. Even though it's close to the intersection, it's noted that I think the Putnam Street is a one-way. So we find that we don't see that as an interference in that respect. We find that it is within spare and intended ordinance. We find it's not, will not adversely affect property values and surrounding parcels. We had no testimony of that. And also noted that this area of the city, there is a lot of similar density in the area. So that was noted by, by the applicant and we informed the board. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. So with that, I made a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. And do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you very much. I will now receive with a roll call vote. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes yes.
Mr. Carrier?
And Jack Courier votes in support.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes yes.
Mr. Lionel?
Steve Lionel votes yes.
And Mary Ellen McKay votes yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Brandon. As you have heard me say before, you have 30 days where someone may or may not appeal. And in light of COVID-19, I don't know how fast or how long it will take for you to plan to begin. But your application has been approved.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Kate Carter, and everybody's doing a great job. See you soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. Thanks, Larry.
I'm gonna
Thank you.
The board, are we good to go still with the next case? Does somebody need a break? Okay, looks like we're good to go. I'm going to now present case number four. Grace Lutheran Church. Grace Lutheran Church, applicant Signs Now, address is 130 Spitbrook Road. Grace Lutheran Church, the owner, Signs Now, applicant, 130 Spitbrook Road, Sheet B, Lot 2428, requesting the following variances. One, from Land Use Code Section 190-101, Table 101-7, to allow an electronic message center, EMC sign, in the R18 zone. Two, to encroach more than 10 feet into the 10-foot required front yard setback for said EMC sign, proposed within the Spitbrook Road right-of-way, 40 feet from roadway. And three, from Land Use Code Section 190-102, Table 102-8, to exceed maximum area of proposed sign. 12 square feet permitted, 32 square feet proposed. All requests to remove existing triangular shaped ground sign and replace with EMC sign. This is in the PIR18 Zone, Ward 8. Is someone here from Signs Now to present this application?
Madam Chair, this is Charles Raz from Signs Now. Here also with people from Grace Lutheran. And Kent Hubner is going to present.
Okay, now are you, are you just calling in?
We're on the video.
I can't see you. So.
You there?
Well, I can't see them.
Can't see them?
No.
This is Jack Courier. I could see the folks from Grace Lutheran.
Yeah, this is, it's harder when, okay, I see you. I see them now. And will somebody, who's going to be doing the presentation?
My name is Kent Hubner. I'm speaking for the owner of Grace Lutheran Church.
Okay, Kent, you may proceed.
Sure. So again, we're asking for those three variances, setback, and the larger than 12 square foot, and also for the upper nests. Our property is, and, by where the property line is relative to the road surface, the property line is like 80 feet back from the road surface. And so, though we have a sign that the outer, at that property line, it's often not seen by individuals who are in Spitbrook Road. And they often actually miss the driveway. I was out there working on the flower bed this past weekend. A lady almost came down into the embankment because she didn't see the entrance. And so what we'd like to do is remove the sign that's currently there and put a sign that you see in our application out at the right-of-way line. We've submitted documents to the, also to the public works so that their engineering staff could see it and have not received any negative comments on that request. We want the, we'd like to have the electronic message center so that we could make notification to people of events that we would have here on a daily basis. So we have codependency groups that be here. We have health colleagues, anonymous people that be here. We'd like to make sure the community at large sees that those meetings are being held here on the day that they're held here so that they can take advantage of them. They're not actually conducted by our church, but we provide the space to those organizations so that they can conduct their meetings in a secure location. And so we'd like to make sure that they know that we also have a food pantry. And we'd like to let the community at large know the base that a food pantry is being offered so that they can, again, take advantage of that service of our community. We know that there are rules for electronic message centers and those rules are designed so that the sign doesn't become a distraction to the drivers. So again, we would like to be able to put a message up every day so that people know what's happening on it. It wouldn't be a message that's, you know, flashing or changing or anything like that. It's just to let people know when it's happening. We had considered putting up a changeable letter sign, but we feel there's a safety concern there in that in inclement weather, because of the deep embankment that next to where the sign is, persons who might be trying to change those letters could fall down and be banged to an engine. And we don't want to have that risk. So the electronic message center became the choice. As far as the sign size, again, we're trying to get it to be large enough that people can see it and not miss the property. And so that's why the sign size that we chose, again, not trying to make it big and obtuse. We're just trying to make it so it's conceivable to people at Spitbrook Road. And we're still going to be 40 feet back from the lots. So again, size is important. It is smaller than the sign that we currently have out there. It's about half, it'll be about half the size of them. And when we submit our application for the sign, for the building and the sign, again, we know that we'll have to commit to following the rules for electronic mess. Does that miss anything you think we should?
Just to, Charles Raz, Signs Now, just to add a couple other supporting points. Know that it is a common practice for other locations in the city to have a sign located right-of-way.
Madam Chair, if I can interrupt?
Yes. Who's speaking?
This is Rob Shaw.
Oh, hi, Mr. Shaw.
Since we have multiple folks from Grace Lutheran present and speaking, I think each time one of you changes or talking, we need you to identify who it is because that's important for then the minutes that we keep. So if you could, if you switch essentially presenters or who's talking, if you can help us out with that, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to ask, I see Mr. Carter's hand up. I think the gentleman did say his name. However, I don't think we heard it. And I would also request that when you speak, you please give your name and your address for the record. Mr. Carter, your fault.
And if the speaker could get a little bit closer to their laptop or their microphone, they seem pretty far away. And I'm hearing a little bit of echoing. And I feel like there's like a big box. So if they can move a little closer, that'd be helpful, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
How's this Carter? This is Charles Raz. Signs Now, 24 Diamond Back Avenue, Nashua. That better?
Yes.
A little bit.
Okay. And so we know it's an accepted practice and other properties in the city of Nashua have a sign, freestanding sign in the right-of-way due to similar conditions where the line for the property is quite a bit back from the roadway due to either...
Excuse me, but I think we've lost his audio.
I missed the last...
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Okay. So the, going from the setback location, Kent had already mentioned the size, the visible. One of the things we know from our distance and size of lettering for signs is that obviously the larger the letter, then the greater distance you can see it from. And so to get the proper size for the text in the part that's going to change day to day, we need to have that size be up to 14 or 15 square feet so we can get the three lines of text on there to be readable from the roadway at a safe distance. So the other requirement that we had previously sought was to have the message center be the larger portion of the sign. However, that would have required still another variance. So we decided to keep the message center under 50% of the sign area as Nashville requires. And then just made the Grace Lutheran name section on top, take up the other 50% or so. So we are really looking for that safety and readability from a distance down the road. Regarding the message center in the specifics, the hardship specifically for this property, in some cases, in many cases, the changeable copy signs that you see are changed quite a less frequently, like maybe every few weeks or months, even for a season. People will put up a special or an upcoming event. I know in our class of sign that we have, we keep it up there for three weeks. And so the task of carrying out the letters and putting them up occurs a few times a year. In this case, it's two orders of magnitude more than that. They're talking about having messages for the specific events almost every day of the year. And so the task is quite a bit different. And this is a good way to automate it with this message center. Also, the distance from the office to the sign is quite a bit different. You might notice it on the property diagram that the building is set way back from where the sign would be in the road. So for somebody to carry those letters out is quite a bit different. The typical storefront owner who has a changeable copy sign on his storefront or just a few feet away from it. So we wanted to point out that hardship and that difference that's specific to this property and to this Grace Lutheran Church as being really different from any of the other pieces that might otherwise not qualify.
Thank you. Does that conclude your comments?
I have no other comment.
Okay, I'm going to assume there's no other testimony that you want to give. Does anyone on the board have any questions for the applicant? Kate, if you could put the pictures down so I could see the board. Thank you very much. Again, does anyone on the board have any questions? Okay.
Mr. Courier had his, Mr. Courier had his, and Mr. Shaw had their hand raised.
I just saw Mr. Shaw's hand. Oh, there's Mr. Courier. I lost him. Mr. Shaw.
Actually, I think Mr. Courier had his raised ahead of me.
Mr. Courier.
I was just wondering if the applicant could clarify the proposed square footage of this sign as compared to the existing square footage of the triangular sign.
Sure, this is Kent Hubner. By the way, I didn't give my personal address before, which would be, I live at 16 Parkers Drive in Hudson, New Hampshire. And I'm a member of Grace Lutheran Church and a member of the board. So the current sign is 54, I'm sorry, 55 square feet each face. And so this would be a reduction, 55 to 20.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shaw.
I had a couple of questions. The first one is the electronic message, messages themselves. I thought I was understanding from your testimony that you might only be looking to or even okay with keeping the frequency of the message that your, the messages, I should say, that are being displayed to perhaps as little as once a day. Whereas if I'm not mistaken, our, the regular allowance for an EMC sign, like this is for, I think it's five seconds, and then it can change as long as it's just the three lines of text. But can you clarify what, how many messages you might be looking to have be available? And in what frequency change that those would occur?
Sure. So there's three lines of text. And I'm going to say on most days, we would be maybe once a day or once every other day, we could be changing it. I can perceive that there might be a point where we might need to have more than three lines to advertise a particular event, you know, more than one event on a day. But we're aware that we can't sit there and, you know, randomly just, you know, have that covered. So again, if we did have to change it more than once a day, it's not going to be, it's not going to be violating the current rules as to how often it can change. And it probably wouldn't change more than maybe once an hour if you did even change that. So again, we believe that once a year, once every other day in that neighborhood is how often we change it.
Would you could clarify, are you open or willing to accept some level of stipulation that might be more restrictive than the every five seconds and the no limit? But there's really no limitation to the number of messages that could be displayed, you know, as long as they're within the five-second timing. But are you open to something that would be more restrictive to that, I thought, condition?
Yeah, we would be open to something to be more restrictive than the, I mean, five seconds. That's, nobody's going to read the thing. I mean, it needs to stay up for, I'm going to say at least three or four minutes before you change it. Otherwise, you're just kind of wasting, you're wasting your bandwidth because people won't read it.
And the other thing I wanted to ask about is the nature of any lighting of the sign internally or externally, and also about the, what the brightness levels are or will propose as for the actual EMC part of the sign.
Sure. This is Charles Raz again. The sign would be, the name portion at the top, Grace Lutheran Church, would be internally illuminated. And you can see from the drawing, it has a dark background with white lettering. So this is a practice that helps reduce some of the light pollution at night. The message center that's being proposed has dimming that it, as it gets to nighttime, the brightness dims. So this is a common practice for message center, although I have to say not all message centers do that. So and I'm sure we've seen them. So, yeah, that is a real concern. So technologies that are available now and programing signs allow that dimming to technically.
Okay. And then the other thing is, are, were you planning to have it operational 24 hours a day? Or was there a time during the overnight hours where... Or was there a time during the overnight hours where you either had considered to not have it lit or certainly the EMC? Well, quite frankly, I'll just mention, I have a lot of concerns about supporting an EMC, and we've seen a lot of implementations throughout the city that was very poor adherence. I'm still very more hopeful in your case that if it's granted, that there's a much more likely reasonable compliance that would be had. But still, that being said, I think one of the things that would be certainly helpful for me is to know that maybe the sign would be, you know, pretty much at least EMC part of it, and perhaps even the overall sign might not be illuminated from, you know, 11:00 at night to 5:00 in the morning, or some kind of time like that. I'm just wondering, has it been discussed or what you're open to?
So we're, there's not much traffic on Spitbrook Road, Spitbrook Road after 11:00, 11:30 at night, and oftentimes I'm here at 11:00 sometimes, so I don't see much traffic. And so it would definitely be a way to reduce our energy consumption by not having it lit at night. However, I am still concerned that somebody will be able to see that that entrance is there at night and not accidentally pull up into the ravine. I guess that's my concern. Again, if you watched the person almost pull their car into that ravine when they tried to corner that driveway, I just am concerned from that perspective. And so the electronic message center turning off at the evening from some period of time, I think that would be very acceptable for us. But I think we would still want to have the other part of the sign illuminated, maybe at a lower intensity so that people don't miss the entryway and drive off into that ravine.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone else on the board have any question? Seeing none, is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor of this application?
Madam Chairman, this is Kate. I see no hands raised in the participants tab, and I have not received any messages from participants.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? And Mr. Carter Falk, I have the letter.
Okay, that's what I was going to say, Madam Chair, there is a letter that we received that, Mr. Dolan.
Yeah, I was just going to let, if someone was here, them have the floor first before I read the letter. And Kate, do you see anyone here?
I see no one present who wishes to speak.
Thank you. Then, as Mr. Falk noted, we did, the board did receive a letter, an email from Mr. James Ryan. And it was dated April 27, 2020. And it is on the proposed Grace Lutheran Church electronic sign. I am vehemently opposed to an electronic sign at 130 Spitbrook Road, Nashua, New Hampshire as approved for proposal at the Planning Board, Zoning Board, Tuesday, April 28, 2020. I find electronic signs most distracting to drivers, too bright day or night, and obnoxious for the community, especially the citizens of Ward 8. The signage would be completely out of character for the neighborhood. This is not Emherst Street. Electronic signage always seems to introduce unintended consequences. Should all churches be permitted to erect electronic signs? Clearly, they would each make a societal case for the need. My church has a website and publishes weekly bulletins. Additionally, it services the congregation learns of events for the week. Electronic signs should not be expected to target non-members of the congregation. Hence, the signage becomes a nuisance. I urge the board to disapprove the signage proposed by Grace Lutheran Church. Jim Ryan, 6 Clearview Drive, 03062, which is Nashua, New Hampshire. So let the record reflect that we do have one letter, so one voice in opposition. Mr. Falk.
Madam Chair, I don't know if the board got another letter. I just got it this morning. It was an email from Tim Dolan. Did anybody receive that?
No.
All right, I apologize. It got, it got sent to me first this morning. Since no one has it, I guess I'll have to read it. It's not that long. It's from Tim Dolan. He says, "My reading and understanding of this request is, number one, to move the sign closer to the road similar to the World Academy's position. Number two, to allow better visibility to drivers. Number three, he understands it is a 32-square-foot sign. If so, he would like to make the following explicit statements. Number one, no part of the 32-square-foot sign may be, may contain any electronics or electrical wiring. One A, at the base of the sign, appropriate lighting may be directed at the sign. One B, this base illumination should be minimal enough but not cause undue light pollution. One C, no part of the sign or base illumination may allow flashing lights. One D, if a variable electronic message is allowed, then the message cannot change more than once every eight hours. And number two, please keep the illumination at a bare minimum." And he ends the letter with saying that he's sorry that he could not make the meeting. Please do your best to understand my intent. He spent 15 minutes reading and 15 minutes thinking and typing. Thank you, Tim Dolan, Ward 8 at 8 Chaucer Road.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Let the record note that we have two letters in opposition. The applicants, Kent, you and the gentleman with you have five minutes in rebuttal to respond to these concerns. And so I will turn the floor over to one of the three of you who would like to do the speaking. Only one can speak.
Forward to Chuck Raz from Sign House.
Thank you. If you would please state your name and address again for the record.
This is Charles Raz, 24 Diamondback Avenue, Nashua. In regards to the second letter, the email, it sounded like there was initially some concern, but that later on, the letter, the email said that if an electronic message center is allowed, it may not be more than every eight hours. So I would say that what we're proposing is, is once a day, which would be once every 24 hours. And so I hope that that would, that would help. It appears he also, it was mentioning the dimming and the need to control the brightness. And so I think we've talked about that. Mr. Shaw's question helped elaborate, helped us elaborate on that, so that the design of the sign, as you see, is set up to not be, like many other signs are, which is a white background, very bright at night. And by turning off the message center from some set of hours, 10:00, 11:00 at night, to 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, I don't know what prime it could be, start, or sometimes it starts early, it's 5:30 or 6:00, so maybe good to have those events illuminated prior to that, so people driving would know that those events happening that day. So just wanted to make those, make those points to the board. I think the, that there is a lot of concern about message centers because some people have been very worried about what they've done, specifically in Nashua, with misusing message centers, their size, their brightness, the timing, keeping it on, and also giving some of the content. So that is, if there's any need for the board, do you consider stipulations for any of those points in order passes? I think church would definitely appreciate that, because they do not view this as an advertising vehicle or as a way to attract more people to the church, but rather to provide community service to these other organizations that meet here periodically. And it's very different, I think it's very, a good citizenship on behalf of this particular church, to be hosting those kinds of events, and to be willing to do that and take time and effort to do so. So I would ask the board, consider that, and also, are plausible in light of some of these other letters, like First Blunder, it seemed to be indicating that it was a way to advertise the church, you know, be an outreacher or something. That certainly is a way to advertise the events happening for the church. But again, these events are also community events, the service events, which change daily. So please keep that in mind, and if there are any stipulations, like the motion, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Falk.
Madam Chair, since there were two letters of opposition and no one is here, no one is present to testify, I guess we'd have to say that there's no person in our audience that is available to rebut.
Oh, okay, I get where you're going. Thank you. We have the letters, and I guess the letters are going to have to stand on their own merit. We have nobody here physically. Thank you. At this point, I will close the public hearing, and I will open the public meeting. Does anyone on the board, well, let's see, forgetting. Mr. Shaw, any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I'm anxious to hear the thoughts of my colleagues, but I definitely would like to have some restrictions or stipulations put on the EMC. And still, and I think it'd be very helpful for at least considering very limited changeover of the messages themselves, and having the EMC off perhaps again from like 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM. I think those things will really help. I also appreciate having the dimmer kind of settings for the sign in the overnight hours, because I really do think it'd be very, you know, very good as neighbors for that part of, of the city for the light pollution and the, even just any brightness or distracted, distractingness to drivers to be kept at very bare minimum. So with limited changing of message, reduced brightness, those things can help quite a bit. So I think I still would like to, you know, hear what my colleagues have to say. I think also, as far as, you know, I had some concerns again as far as the placement of the sign and the whole setback part of things, but quite frankly, with the right-of-way coming such an extreme amount off of Spitbrook, and we pretty much dealt with this with World Academy prior, that it's reasonable, I think, for the placement of the sign to be where it is. It's still way, well back from the road, but will meet the, I think, the beneficial aspect of what's needed without it being problematic or being in sightlines or anything else. Well, that part of things, I'm fine with. And I think the size of the sign is not excessive, and they will actually be reducing the size of the sign overall. So even though it will be set close to the road, I think that part, I view as kind of a net. So those are some of my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Lionel, I see that your hand is up, and Mr. Falk, I see that your hand is up.
I'll defer to Mr. Falk first, and then I'll come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Lionel. I just wanted to bring up something that I think might be important. I believe that the board did receive an email about a public easement use and occupancy agreement. This sign is proposed to be in the Spitbrook Road, Spitbrook Road right-of-way, and it's past the setback, so it's in city land. So they have been working with the Board of Public Works to get an agreement, which is like insurance and holding the city harmless in case something happens out there. I see that they have worked on it with the Board of Public Works. It has not been signed by the mayor yet, but I know they have, they are working on that. So I just want to throw that out, that there is some kind of an agreement that the city is working on with them. Should the board support it? I think you all, I think I sent it to everybody.
You did.
You all got it. That's great, thank you. I just wanted to make, I don't know if you want to discuss this, but it is a big part of their approval.
Yeah, I have it. I'm assuming the rest of the board has it. And I'm going to let Mr. Lionel speak, and if one of the board members wants to bring this up and discuss it, absolutely, the floor is there. Mr. Lionel.
Okay, thank you. I don't have a problem with the placement of the sign. I was a little bit concerned with sightlines for a car pulling out of the church driveway, looking up and down Spitbrook Road, but I sort of went there and looked at it myself, and I think that's fine. However, this is another request for a church EMC in a residential zone, and we have previously denied such requests, at least in, as long as I've been on the board. I would be inclined to deny this one to, for the EMC. I don't have a problem with the internal illuminated sign or the size of the sign designating the church, but I, especially an EMC that's being used to promote services that are, that don't belong to the church, I cannot support that.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Mancara.
Overall, I really don't have a problem with the application. I think that given the, you know, depth of the setback, which I think has been noted before, having a larger sign closer to the right-of-way makes sense. The fact that it includes electronic messaging, I think with the stipulations that have been suggested so far, limiting the frequency for with its change, and addressing the illumination, I think that satisfies a lot of those concerns. For me, the electronic message component of it isn't troubling. This is an increasingly common method of providing messaging. It's actually not only for churches, for nonprofits, institutions, schools use it, public facilities use it, and frankly, we've seen an increased use of electronic messaging for public safety reasons in residential areas. You know, your speed monitoring is probably one of the most common. We see it along the highways. So I think it's increasingly acceptable to use electronic messaging, so in itself doesn't trouble me.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher. Mr. Boucher, we cannot hear you.
Hold on, let me see if I can unmute him.
Oh, thanks.
How's that?
He's unmuted.
That's something with Mr. Boucher's plan.
WebEx.
If Mr. Boucher could turn his speaker down while he's talking.
What's up?
Yeah, I can hear you, JP.
There's feedback.
Yeah, I heard that.
You need to unmute call-in user, too.
Carter, did you hear that?
Yeah, JP's on the phone, and he probably can't see it directly through the webex.
I hear that.
Okay, JP, can you try again, please?
How's that?
Perfect. Perfect.
Okay.
You know, I'm not touching anything.
We just needed Mr. Shaw.
Okay, um, what I was saying is, um, uh, I think, uh, I agree with Mr. McCarr. He said it much better than I could have said it. Um, I, I am in support of the application as a whole. The, the relocation, um, and the size of the sign, I think is reasonable. And, um, his explanation for the EMC is, um, exactly where I would stand and, and, and where I would support the application. So thank you, Mr. McCarr. You said it the best way and, um, that's my position. So I would, I would support the application as it stands. Again, with those stipulations, um, that were mentioned on the EMC portion.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Knakis.
Uh, I'm not in support of the EMC as is, but if it were to be approved, I think that the stipulations discussed should be applied.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Courier.
Uh, this is Jack Courier. Uh, I'm, I'm in support of, uh, the requests two and three, uh, for being closer to the road. It kind of, it, you know, essentially a match, match the location, so to speak, of the, the World Learning Center sign, the school sign. And, uh, the size of it, I, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. A couple of things on the EMC, why I'm not in support of that is, I, I don't think that that provides any amount of safety to going into the, the wrong spot. Like when I go in and out of that site, you know, I could see where someone might almost like drive down into the ditch because they may, they probably don't realize that it's the same. It's like a shared entrance to the World Learning Center. And, and it, whether a sign's EMC at its new location or not, I don't think that's going to make any difference. If, if that is a common issue, well, you know, maybe just a little row of some small hedges, so people see that it's, it's a common entrance because, you know, the land kind of drops off and some people might think the driveway goes down to where that little fenced in area is. So I, I don't think the EMC buys anything for safety. The other concern I have with the EMC is I, I, I concur with the, the letters in, in, that don't support the EMC. I mean, when, when you drive this road at rush hour, particularly in the afternoon, you know, the light goes green, uh, down by the, uh, you know, the, the entrance to the Tara. Sometimes, you know, the light less frequently goes red at the, uh, at the high tech center there. And you, you get these lines of cars that come up Spitbrook Road. And at that time, when the school's letting out, uh, you know, somebody, there, there's, it, 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 there's quite frequently a slamming on the brakes because of a near rear end. And you really need to stay focused, you know? So you have the two driveways coming out from World Learning Center. And then across the street, you have the driveway of the, of the, the recreation area. And that is just a very dicey, uh, challenging place. You know, 10, 15 years ago, nothing. But after the school's really ramped up and then they park across the street and you have pedestrians walking to the school. It's an extremely dangerous area, I feel. And I, I don't, while I agree with Mr. Shaw's earlier comment, that the likelihood of, you know, maintaining the stipulations of an EMC is greater with this applicant than, than just with, with others. I, I, I don't feel it's necessary to, or adds to the safety of it. And then as Mr. Lionel said, we had heard from a previous church on a previous busy road that EMC was, was really necessary for the conduct of the church. But that sign, we didn't approve the EMC. That sign is in place and I think it's functioning very fine. And, you know, the residents are, are happy nearby that there's not, not a, you, you know, an EMC in the area. So I, I stand in support of the two variances being closer in the size, but not of the EMC.
Thank you, Mr. Courier. Um, Mr. Shaw, did, does this alter your thought processes at all? Did, you had said you wanted to wait to hear what your fellow board members had said.
Um, it, possibly I also would be interested to hear what you have to say.
Okay, I'm sitting here and I can agree with all of you. I'm, you know, and I look and I, because you all have much more expertise in this. And so I lean on, um, the thought processes that I listen to. The EMC part of the sign, the other two pieces of the variances, I don't have issues with for all the aforementioned reasons. Um, I think all five of us are in concurring with that, or actually all of us present are in concurring with that. It's the EMC portion of it, the flashing part of that sign. And I don't know how bright it's going to be. I don't know what kind of, um, distraction it would be based on how bright it is. And if the brightness would have more effect at night than in the daytime. Those are some of the variables that I'm thinking about. And I don't know the answer to those questions. And I don't think, you know, anyone here could give me those answers. So, um, having said all that, I think I'm going to have to, um, I don't want to say I'm in a disagreement, but because I don't know and I can't answer, I don't know if someone will be distracted. I know that bright lights affect people that drive. I'm one of those people that is bothered by lights, even headlights at night. So I'm going to have to say, I guess that I stand in favor of two pieces of these, this variance, but not so much in favor of the EMC portion of the sign. And does that help you, Mr. Shaw? Or did I give you more to be confused about?
No, it, it helps. And I think it's kind of leading me towards maybe where I was already starting to go. I mean, I, the other thing is if I, you know, come back to our criteria, sometimes I think it just helps to simplify things, you know? And, you know, the first thing we ask ourselves in the experience is, is it needed to enable to, the applicants propose to use the property given the special condition of the property? Well, you know, it's, EMC is not allowed in the R18 zone. And, you know, I think for good reason typically. And the, the thing that's notable, I think, as well about this, this location is it's kind of very much at the edge of the transition from the last part of kind of developed area. And you have a little bit up there at the, the Sky Meadow Plaza. And you just, you know, behind there is the stuff associated with the Tara Heights and all that. But, you know, right after, as you go up Spitbrook Road the rest of the way, you're into heavy residential and residential through the rest of the city. So I, I think that's, you know, one, one concern there. And so Spitbrook Road itself is kind of transitioning from a commercial road, coming, you know, from downtown South Nashua, excuse me, and, you know, through the last part of that and then going to residential. And so, I mean, I, I have confidence that if we approve this as an EMC, that this is an applicant that I, again, I would feel much more confident that they would adhere to the stipulations. And just because like all these, you know, new EMC signs that are out there, they're pretty much all capable of video and everything else that we, as we have learned from previous applications. I don't have those concerns here like I might have, you know, with a, an, an actual business, a commercial property, uh, where those are much more, you know, kind of potential issues about competition and stuff. So, so I don't, I think there would be much better adherence to just the criteria itself. But I guess I'm still just not feeling like, and I, you know, I want to touch on because I do, the point was made in testimony. And I think it's some concern about, you know, there was a, a concern about the safety aspects of changeable copy and, and doing that. And that is one thing that is kind of the way, you know, in a, uh, alternative means that could satisfy what the applicant is asking for. And there might have to be some special, you know, uh, actions they do if they, perhaps somebody, you know, can still do a changeable copy. The other thing is, you know, many churches throughout the city that don't have any changeable copy or EMC certainly. And that is like a typical, uh, way of having, you know, business conducted also from the church. So I, I guess I'm, I'm not inclined to support it. I, I think that if there was strong sentiment and, and I would, you know, from the board to support, I would definitely argue very strongly for, you know, the stipulations we, we talked about earlier. But I'm, I'm less inclined to, to just support this in general and go with the, um, the fact that I don't think the EMC is still the right answer here.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, I saw your hand up.
Um, I just want to, just, um, just a few more comments. So, um, you know, we're talking about a transition zone, uh, to residential and, um, that's what I see. And I, I don't necessarily look at this as necessarily a safety issue. I, I, I think I look at more as to what is, is, is being asked for. I, I think, uh, again, uh, I'm from the thought that, um, you know, again, EMCs are becoming more of what we see, um, you know, again, not, not in all parts of the city, but I think more commonly accepted for many things. And, uh, in some respects, uh, for this case here, I could, I could argue or I could say to, to anyone that, you know, this is a transition zone. This is unlike, um, the other application, not that it's, we're comparing exactly, but unlike the other application, because that wasn't really in a transition zone. It was on a highly traveled road that leads to another, you know, another town. But, uh, in this case here, you know, I believe it's in a transition zone. I, I, I believe that, um, you know, what's around it makes a difference. You mentioned Sky, but Meadow Plaza up top. But I also say that, you know, what's kind of nice about this was is that the agreement, you know, let's say the stipulation accepting of shutting that off, um, you know, at night, um, the dimming of that. I think an changeable copy sign, um, if I was, I think if anyone was doing it, I've seen them, not saying this is what they would do, but I've seen them as bright as they can be right at night. So they're, they're, you could see those letters. And, you know, in that case there, unless we would make a specific stipulation, I think an changeable copy sign, I think, I don't think we'd be making a stipulation that it has to be off at night, right? That could be on all through the night, right? I've seen those on through the night. So again, that's just my position. I, I, again, know that these are not allowed in the R18 zone. But again, um, part of my, uh, thought with that is that I think I, I sit in agreement with, uh, Mr. Mincara on this. It's just my personal opinion, how I look at it. But that's kind of how I look at this application here, because I feel it's more in transition type area. And I think that, um, it does, I think it does a little bit more justice. And I think that if you're going to be distracted, you're going to be distracted looking at a sign, a, a static sign, because this sign is really going to be static. This is not something that's going to be changing. I think the applicant, um, you know, tested it out. It's once a day. So I, again, I, I, it's just the format that it's being presented in. It's not something that's moving, it's changing copy, not even every five minutes. So, um, so that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Lionel, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I, I just want to comment that we've been fairly consistent, um, applying the rules for EMCs for at least the last couple of years. And we have had requests from churches on, on residential streets, uh, asking for an EMC. And we said no, and they went to a, a changeable copy sign and, and they were fine. I don't see anything in this application that meets the, uh, the requirements for granting a variance in terms of, um, it's certainly not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. And it's, uh, not required to enable use of the applicant's property. They simply want to advertise, uh, other organizations that happen to be renting their space. I, I don't see that as a compelling reason to, to grant this variance.
Does anyone else want to make any other comments? Okay, um, seeing no hands, then I guess I am going to look towards a motion from someone as to which way, you know, this is going to go. And if we're going to do the motion, um, I also need, uh, for our clerk to ensure that we, um, maybe take a couple of them, separate out the motion. However, we're going to do this, so it makes it simpler for Mr. Courier. Mr. Courier, do you have any input into that?
Yes, uh, just to clarify to the board here, the request before us is for the three, uh, three separate variances. So I, I prefer not to make a motion myself since I'm the tribe here. But for, for someone, uh, hopefully there's another volunteer for a motion one way or the other, just to clarify if they're, they're making a motion for all three or one. You know, because it's legal, one, two, or three is to just clarify if somebody, for example, could take two motions together and the third motion is, is a separate motion. Uh, I mean, a third variance is a separate motion. So I, I'll be quiet and I'll just, uh, ask that, uh, whoever makes a motion just clarifies which of the three variances, whether it's one, two, or three, or two together or three together they're speaking to. And with that, I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Courier. Mr. Lionel, I see your hand up.
I'm, I'm offering to make the motions.
That's wonderful. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to be making two separate motions. My first motion, uh, on behalf of Grace Lutheran Church, applicant assigns now, address 130 Spitbrook Road, uh, sheet B lot 2428, requesting the following variance. From land use code section 190-101, table 101-7, to allow an electronic message center EMC sign in the R18 zone. That is, that, that is the motion. The, uh, the board believes that the variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, um, given that there are no particular special conditions of the property and the benefit sought by the applicant, we believe can be achieved by some other reasonable, reasonably feasible method. The board will use this, uh, request is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The board has no opinion on, uh, property values surrounding parcels. We believe that it is contrary to public interest and, uh, substantial justice to the applicant would be served, but that is not, uh, all of the, uh, criteria. And therefore I make a motion to deny this variance.
Is there a second to this motion? Mr. Shaw. I will now call the roll on the motion to deny the EMC number one on the list of three variances. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier.
Uh, Mr. Courier votes in favor of the denial for, uh, request number one, the EMC sign.
You, Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes not in favor.
Voting no. Mr. Lionel.
Mr. Lionel votes in favor of the request to deny.
And Mary Ellen McKay will vote in favor of the request to deny. That is four in favor, one in opposition with Mr. Boucher casting the vote in opposition. And now, Mr. Lionel, do you want to continue on with the second portion of your motion?
Sure. Again, the owner is Grace Lutheran Church, applicant assigns now, addresses 130 Spitbrook Road, requesting the following variances, and these are two variances, uh, to encroach more than 10 feet into the 10-foot required front yard setback for, for said sign. than 10 feet into the 10-foot required front yard setback for said sign. It is no longer an EMC sign, proposed within the Spitbrook Road right-of-way, 40 feet feet from roadway, and from land use code section 190-102, table 102-8, to exceed maximum area proposed sign, 12 square feet permitted, 32 square feet proposed, all request to remove existing triangular shaped ground sign and replace with a non-EMC sign. This is in the R18 zone, Ward A, and I make a motion to approve those two variances.
Do we have a second? Mr. Shaw is the second. Mr. Falk?
I think the board should go over all the points of law.
Oh, yes, I, my apologies, I should have done that. The board finds the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. We discussed being able to identify the fact that the church is there and where the driveway is, given the special conditions of the property. The driveway is hard to see, shared by another property, and the church is way, way back from the road. The board does not believe there's another reasonably feasible method for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board believes this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, does not, will not, we believe it will not adversely affect property values and surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Shaw, do you still concur with your second? Thank you. All roll call. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor of granting these two requests.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor of these two requests.
Thank you. And Marion McKay also votes in favor, so that vote is five to zero. Based on our votes, Kate and Charles, and the other member who is there from the church, you have gotten approval for the variances for part two and part three of your request. The variance on the land use code section 190-101, table 101-7, to allow an electronic messaging center sign has been denied. This decision can be appealed. You have 30 days to appeal that decision or request a rehearing. Any expertise, assistance, please contact Mr. Falk and his department. They would be able to help you with this. Other than that, the other two variances have been granted to the applicant. And, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if it's all right with the board, I'm going to ask for about a five-minute recess, and we will come back at, I have, 8:45. We will be back at 8:50 to move forward with case number five. Okay, I will reconvene the recessed meeting of the Nashua zoning board, and we will reconvene with case number five. Case number five is Daniel and Jane Richardson, 70 Berkeley Street. It's revocable trust. They're the owners, Sheet 48, Lot 61, requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-31. Number one, to encroach up to five feet into the six-foot required side yard setback, Western Property Line. And two, to encroach up to five feet into the six-foot required side yard setback, Northern Property Line. Both requests to replace a non-conforming 12-foot by 20-foot detached garage on a corner lot with a 24-by-24-foot detached two-car garage with storage above. It is in the RA zone, and it is in Ward 3. Is there someone here, is Mr. Richardson here to present? I see you, sir. You may have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, am I speaking loud enough?
Yes, you are, for me.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Daniel Richardson. I live at 70 Berkeley Street in Nashua. I'm sitting here with Robert Vorbach. He's the only other person in the room. He's my architect. And the application is as described. It has to do with garage that was built, but actually, the plan that I got from the planning board was from about 1953, which was the stamp that was on the pencil drawing at the time, which described a 20-by-12-foot garage, which is the dimensions that it is, in the corner of the lot. And the house was built about 1929. So these are buildings which were dated significantly back in time, much before the law that came into effect. It was no problem, it was signed off at the time in 1953, and the, I'm glad you got that up. You let me know if I'm doing anything wrong, if I'm not following procedure. But there's a monument in the corner, and what the intent is, is to replace the garage with a garage, there's no change in fundamental use. The, if this was simply a replacement of an existing garage, it would be probably covered under being grandfathered, but the intent is to improve the lot with a two-car garage that is what is most populated in the neighborhood. My one-car garage is the only other garage, single-car garage within several blocks. There is one other at 36 Berkeley Street. Every other detached garage is a two-car garage for several blocks up and down Berkeley Street and all around Swart Street. So that is the intent. And there's some special, let me know if I need to go through each and every one of the points that you have to rule on. I was hoping that all of the board members had a chance to actually read the application.
Mr. Richardson, we all have had a chance to read the application, and it is your choice. Sometimes it makes things simpler to hear you explain and give the rationale around why you feel your application meets all the criteria.
Okay.
In your best interests, sir.
Oh, okay, okay, good. As I described, that in the submitted application, that it's going to be completely, as far as granting of the requested variance, not being contrary to the public interest, it's going to be completely in character with the existing house and with all other garages in the area of and down Berkeley Street. The site in the corner of the lot is remote from public view. It's, it's, and it's not adjacent to any other buildings whatsoever. There's no safety issue with it being where it is, with the replacement of the garage. The garage is in bad repair, and that's one of the causations. It's been getting worse all the time. The roof is falling apart, the foundation is starting to push in. So it is becoming a problem. So it is in the public's interest for me to rebuild the garage and to replace it with a new safe structure. The proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. The garage use, the lower area, will be used as a garage for cars, trucks, whatever it happened to have, or any future owner would happen to have. Also, the, hopefully, there's room to have a lawnmower, wheelbarrow, all the types of lawn maintenance equipment normally would have. The upper part of the structure would be used solely for storage and perhaps, you know, simple woodworking type of activities. So there's going to be no water service, and there's going to be no fuel service going to it. I have no plan to heat it either, so it's just purely for storage. And some kind of bad living here. The substantial justice would be done to the property owner by granting the variance because the, the, just having the site of the existing garage is characteristic of the neighborhood of almost all other detached garages in the area, which are fundamentally mostly two-car garages, except for the one site. Of the 15 non-conforming detached garages, all are two-car, with the exception of one at 36 Berkeley, and they are non-conforming. So all of them are in the same situation as this one, in that it is non-conforming to the modern side yard setbacks, which I believe is six feet. Just kind of refer you to the attachment to, in the subletty attachment B, which shows up and down Berkeley Street, the GIS map showing all the other detached garages that are right either on or very near the property lines. It's a regular feature of this whole suburban area, both on the east side and the west side of Concord Street. In the table, I provide this data on the table in the application. I only put a couple in there of the most, the closest ones, so that I could show you about permitting. The planning department was kind enough to try to look up the permits for those two-car non-conforming garages, and they had a difficult time finding any permanent record of the permit. The, there were a couple. The most recent one was at 12 Swart Terrace, I think that was around 2005, where they took out an application and went through the zoning board and was ultimately approved in their incursion into the side yard setbacks. The proposed use will not diminish the surrounding properties. And so in the application, there's a photograph of the existing garage. Existing garage is really a mess. It's shown, the photo shows the view from the Butter to the West. It's quite a mess, and so, you know, the improvement by having a brand-new garage would definitely improve the view and would not diminish the value of the Butters property.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
I just wanted you to take note of the time. You have a little over two minutes left of your time. If you have any comments you would like your architect to make?
Oh, okay. Well, I just want to say, so one of the things is, I have a real problem with my lot. My lot is four feet lower than the Butter to the West, and so in order to have a flat yard, it rolls off into my yard, so the roll-off takes about 15 feet just to come off of that elevation. There's also, towards the south, there's another whole section. So most of my yard is consumed by a rolling hill, so it's almost unusable. The small amount I have, which is close to the garage, which is flat, was for the kids to play with the larger garage. It's going to consume a lot of that valuable usable area of my lot, but it's necessary to replace the garage. And the garage, as you see on the site plan, will, there's no other place to put it. It is what it is. It's the way that the lot was arranged, and the drive will be in the same place. No other place to put the drive because of the way that the property slopes down towards the east side. And there's just no other place to put the garage, basically. Do you have anything else that you'd like to say?
I'm Robert Vorbach. I live at 58 Manchester Street here in Nashua, Vorbach Architecture. What I'll say is the aesthetic of the garage will belong to the existing house. It is a stucco home with a slate roof, and we will respond to the context and the details of the existing house.
Thank you. Does any, Kate, if you could put the, your sharing down so I can see the board, so I can see if somebody has any questions? Thank you so much. Does any member, I see Mr. Minkara's hand up. Thank you. Mr. Minkara?
If I may, given that the existing garage is going to be demolished, did the applicant consider simply shifting the garage four feet over in other directions so that you couldn't need to set up with the new structure?
Yes, the problem with that is that when you do that, if you look at the site plan, it brings the garage so close to the house, you can't actually get the second car into the second car bay because it's so close to the house. And that's the difficulty there.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions of the applicant? Okay.
Adam Chair, I see a hand up for Jack Carrier.
Oh, okay, I didn't see his hand in the picture. Mr. Carrier?
Thanks, a couple of questions. The topography challenge, as Mr., as the applicant was talking about Mr. Richardson, I'm wondering if that is, is that due to maybe a septic, or is it just the way the land was graded when, at the time he purchased the property?
Yes, if I may respond, the entire backyard was a hill that went completely across the backyard, all the way to the garage, and it was one of the culprits that resulted in the foundation of the garage starting to become pushed in by the hydraulics applied to the garage. to become pushed in by the hydraulics applied to it. So I had to make a place for the children to play. I had a excavator come in and haul away some of that dirt so there'd be a small level area for the children to play. Have a little kind of a patio area in the back. But it's a great part of the rolling off of the hill there is still there next to the ride or next, towards the south, on the south side. It's not all the same now. It's the hill, the property to the west rolls off as fast as it can under my property, but it still consumes like 14 feet to do that.
Okay, the other question I have is, it looks like on the proposed new garage, it would have, I'm guessing like a footer and a four-foot frost wall or so. And I'm wondering if you or your architect could confirm if that's the case? And I'm also wondering if the foundation, or say, half of the foundation for the existing garage would be used for the proposed new garage? Would it be a whole new foundation and floor all together?
All right, this is Robert Vorbach. The existing block foundation is cracked. The block is shifting. It is problematic from a standpoint of structural soundness. So we will not be using any of that existing foundation relative to the new garage. The corner of that existing foundation, the northwest corner, is sort of the datum or marker for the new foundation. And the new foundation will be pour concrete. It'll be 10 inches. Yes, it will have a frost wall relative to the code and a footer. So it is a new foundation, 10-inch walls thing, and it meets code relative to being for football grade.
And just a follow-up question is, if this proposed garage were approved, could that work be done without having to go into the Butters property on the back and the side? And I'm wondering, because it looks so close, I thought about three feet was needed to give clearance. And I'm just wondering if it's, you know, as the architect, I'm looking for your testimony, could this be done without impacting directly the Butters on the back and the side?
That is an excavating issue, definitely. And that would have to be part of the construction process. But we would have to definitely minimize or, you know, do away with any impact on the existing Butters properties. So as far as accomplishing that, we would definitely have to think it through and make sure that, you know, the excavation was done with minimal, if any, damage to abutting property.
Okay, and just another question is, was there, is there a thought or consideration if the proposed, if a proposed two-car garage was, say, rotated, I'm going to say, counterclockwise to facilitate, you know, vehicles entering the left or more center versus the more to the side bay? And also, is there, was there any consideration of leveling more of the backyard to provide like a same-sized play area if the larger garage was put on?
What I can say there is we took a look at other options in terms of the placement of the garage. The one issue that came in the discussion was if the garage were directly west of the existing house, more backyard would be lost. We did not want to place the garage directly behind the house to the west for that reason. We did not want to eat up more of the backyard. So regarding the use of the property and where the driveway is, we just felt that trying to lock into, in essence, the footprint of the existing garage, that would leave more open space relative to the property. And also, as Mr. Richardson has shared, there is a significant drop-off from the west property onto his property. So it would require more excavation than we felt would be appropriate for the project.
Yeah, this Yeah, so yeah, fundamentally, that is the case, as Mr. Vorbach has stated. If the garage is rotated, and then obviously you'd have to shift it more southward in order to be able to turn the cars in that corner into that garage. Yeah, you'd basically be committing, you know, like entire half of the available yard into driveway and the other, and then a big chunk of it to the foundation of the garage. Then it would be, you'd be forced into a whole activity of excavation that you really don't want to have to get involved with, which impacts, you know, trees on the other side, down on the south side. You know, if that was going to be done, you would probably want to try to attempt bringing in the driveway from the Swart Street side. But, you know, that's a whole different grade issue too, because there's a granite wall there with some 80-foot pine trees or larches. So you'd have to go right through that. You'd have to lower that entire grade. And it's just, it just snowballs into a real mess.
All right, thank you for that. And then one final question on Mr. Vorbach's, like, side view of the proposed garage framing section. In my mind, it looks like an A-frame roof, kind of like at a 45-degree pitch, maybe, for the roof rafters there. And I just wanted to clarify if that is the proposed size of it. When I, you know, when you mentioned about having a, like, workspace above or a workshop, to me, it's more like a, you know, more like a two-story garage with with a much shallower pitch with this sort of thing, you know? Someone who's maybe six feet tall could stand up maybe only a few feet left or right of the ridgeboard. But I just wanted to clarify, you know, if this was, in fact, the design, the second story, if you want to call it that.
It's designed as a story and a half. The roof pitch is in harmony with the existing house. We looked at what the existing roof pitches were, the main roof of the house, and we responded to that in terms of design. The other factor is once you start lowering the pitch, the useful area of the storage attic, if you will, or loft drops significantly. So the balance between, you know, usable space, aesthetic, and just framing itself settled into a 12/12 pitch, which is 45 degrees.
All right, thank you for helping with those questions. Appreciate it very much. I'll put my electronic hand down, and I'm all set for now.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions of the applicant?
Madam Chairman, I see no other hands. I receive
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We did receive an email from Francis G. Murphy. I think it was all emailed to the board members. He is in support. He's at 72 Berkeley, and he's in support of it. I think it was emailed to everybody yesterday. Hopefully you all caught that. I think, Mr. Richardson, you got that as well?
I didn't receive it, but I'm glad that you sent it out.
I believe that, I think we sent it out to everybody, but it's a, does everybody have that?
This is Jack, and I received an email with that.
Okay, it's a short little email that Mr. Murphy is in support. Madam Chair?
Yeah, I don't have that, so I'm sorry.
Would you like me to read it real quick? So everybody can hear it?
Yes, since I don't have it, or I would have read that in. I don't, I have another email, but I do not have that one. I apologize.
This is an email from Francis G. Murphy to Daniel Richardson. Just back and forth. He said that he's glad that Mr. Richardson caused him to take a better look at the plan. The architect had reused the existing one filed with the city. Actually, he just says, "Looks good. I will not object. Do you need anything further from me? Good luck, stay safe and well." Brian, that's Francis Murphy.
Okay, I do see that. I saw that, Carter. It's just that I looked further and I said, "Oh, this is an email from Mr. Richardson." And I, I thought it was a conversation between him and the gentleman, and I didn't realize that that was something that should come to the board as in support.
Sure, it's like they, Mr. Richardson and his neighbor went back and forth a few times, but, but the neighbor did say, "Hi, Dan, looks good. I will not object. Do you need anything further from me? Good luck, stay well, safe." That's really it.
Yeah.
I would call that a letter of support.
Oh, yeah, I do too. I see that now. Thank you. And Kate said there was no one else here in support. Is there anyone? And yes, Carter, I know we have a letter, an email coming up in the next portion of this. But I'm going to ask first if we have anybody present who wishes to speak in opposition to this request.
Madam Chair, this is Kate, seeing no hands raised.
Thank you, Kate. The board is in receipt of an email. And I will read the email into the record. My name is Nancy Tropia, co-owner of Home at Two Sports Street and buildable house lot on Concord Street above Skrillie Park. Co-owner is Daniel Tropia. We must oppose Richardson variance request for setback of only one foot encroaching up to five feet into legally required six-foot side yard setback, western property line, and encroaching five feet into the six-foot required setback, northern property line. Both variances would affect our two properties located at Two Sports Street and one legally buildable house lot on Concord Street above Skrillie Park. I have paid separate tax bills, two bills, since approximately 1971, 48 or 49 years, always believing that my property rights under Nashua's required setback requirement would be protected. The variance approval would affect our rights as property owners, both financially and aesthetically. An oversized garage, 24 by 24, only one foot from two abutting properties, would decrease the financial values of both our properties, as well as decreasing our right to an enjoyable view and must not be allowed. I must add that the planned oversized garage is the approximate size and height of a small Cape Cod house that we believe would not be allowed. Daniel and Jane Richardson must not be allowed to use their property in a way that interferes with our right to enjoy the views of both our properties and also maintains the financial values of both our home on Swart Street and buildable house lot on Concord Street. Richardsons must not be allowed to bypass Nashua's requirement of a six-foot setback. Again, both large and reduced setbacks, western and northern, would affect both of our two properties. The Richardsons must not be allowed to build an oversized garage that infringes on this Butters' rights to enjoy both their properties, both aesthetically and financially, with requested variance. We would like to refer to the Richardson submitted picture of the removal of a large pine tree. As we recall, this land was once in line with our land. We're very close to it. Removal of the tree about or within one year from the Richardsons acquiring the property resulted in creation of a lovely patio area next to the existing garage and is now a deep drop off, perhaps eight feet or so. I recently read a quote, "No land exists in isolation. Property owners must and should respect the rights of the Butters of surrounding properties. Signed, Nancy G. Tropia and Daniel Tropia, Two Sports Street, Nashua, New Hampshire." Mr. Richardson, have you seen this letter?
Yes, I have.
Okay. You now can have five minutes, yourself or your architect, to respond to this letter.
I'd be glad to.
Mr. Richardson, I just want to correct myself. Only one person may speak. It's either you or your architect.
Thank you, I'll be the one speaking.
Okay, fine.
Please bear with me, I know these meetings can go long. And, but please pay attention, I do have prepared response, and I'll just read it.
Oh, thank you.
I understand that people get nervous about the prospect and fear of change, but I am quite sure I can ally my west neighbor's fears by addressing her issues. Her basis for opposition to variance on both the west side and the north side makes two assertions about the proposed width and length. The first assertion is it'll decrease the financial values of our properties. I cannot follow this logic. No quantification of causation or amount of diminishment of the value of property has been provided. I have never come across any data suggesting a residential property improvement, width and length might decrease a Butters' property valuation, particularly when there is no conceivable physical change to the Butters' property or impact on its enjoyment and use. For the north side, there is absolutely no impact on the west Butters. The impacted neighbor to the north has already made a statement supporting the new garage as designed and as positioned. This has been provided to you via the zoning coordinator. As to the west side, the proposed width and length have absolutely no effect on the financial valuation of the neighboring property. The very same non-impact on the Butters' valuation would happen if their structure did not require a variance from the modern setback. The property owner would build it by right in accordance with the ruling of the planning department administering official. As this variance application actually addresses the garage positioning on the owner's property, I cannot conceive how the width and the length of the garage might impact the Butters' property valuation. The second assertion states that the width and the length would decrease our right to an enjoyable view. This is a right which I'd never heard of previously. Regardless, I am more than convinced the Butters is mistaken. I refer you to the aerial picture of the two properties together, which has been provided as an abutting document or a rebuttal document. Please note that the large Norway maple directly between the two properties, which completely obfuscates the existing garage which completely obfuscates the existing garage and much of our house through spring through fall. The new garage would likewise be obfuscated as the tree is enormous and low-hung. In consideration of my neighbors' like for the tree and my own desire to not see their house, I have not cut down that tree. And I'll refer you to the photo of the back of the existing garage, which was actually in the application, taken from ten feet away. The distance from the roof peak to the abutter's soil is less than seven feet. So that's, that's all the elevation revealed at that point. I can touch the peak while standing with my hand. I am surprised the abutter would prefer to view this existing garage as it is falling apart. There is rot, there is peeling paint, the roof's falling in. And prefer that as being enjoyable instead of a new garage. It should be noted that the property owner's proposed garage height has been reviewed to meet the land use regulation. It would be unjust for the abutter's view preference.
Excuse me, Mr. Richardson, you have about thirty-five seconds.
Okay. Might usurp the property owner's compliance? It should be noted that if the same proposed garage were able to be built with, within the modern setback, the abutter's view would be exactly the same as if the variance were allowed. The abutter's view presently enjoys the benefit of several feet of higher elevation. In rebuttal, I would now refer you to the true elevation drawing from the abutter's view. If the garage were to be built on the same elevation plane as the abutter's property, as in the case with most property, the abutter would have full view of the structure rear. Accordingly, I hope I have alighted my abutter's fears and events that this home improvement will be a significant improvement to her view of factual valuation increase for her property. Rebutting documents I have provided, but I guess they might not be available. So could he would be?
Okay, and your time has elapsed, sir. Since the person who sent us the email is not here, she, you know, that can't be responded to back and forth. And so at this point, I'm going to then turn to the Board and see if anyone at this point has any further questions of the applicant. Seeing no hands, and Kate, I don't, do you see, oops, excuse me, Mr. Shaw, I spoke too soon.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify. Did you see the tree, I don't know if it's a maple tree, that tree at the back of the property? Is that on your property? Is the tree yours or the other property on there?
The, the tree is actually the base, the tree is why it actually straddles, you know, either, to some degree, both properties. As far as like, owns a tree is, could be a question. But either way, really neither one of us wants to cut it down. And it is big, it's a very, very enormous tree. And the limbs hang down burdened with leaves. So it provides a nice view block.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have a hand from Jack Courier.
Mr. Courier?
Yes, I would just like to clarify. The letter is from Two Swart Terrace and it mentions an abutting undeveloped property. So I'm looking on the GIS and I, I just want to clarify if it's property forty-eight dash fifty-seven and forty-eight dash fifty-eight, which is in regards to the letter of opposition. I'm wondering, Mr. Richardson, could you verify if there's two pieces of property that that letter is talking about?
Yeah, I haven't checked that out, but I know that, that they do own two pieces of property and one of them is the lot on which their house sits, which is abutting or on Swart Street and Concord Street. The other one is to the north between their, their lot their house is on and Greeley Park.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, I mean, just for the, for the other board members, it's the last page of our application. It's a GIS map that, you know, probably Mr. Falk or Mr. Richardson provided and it has Mr. Richardson's property kind of circled with a Sharpie pen. And so if the other board members, what I'm looking at is, is that sheet and, and it shows forty-eight dash fifty-seven, that's the lot number, which is number Two Swart Terrace, and just to the north of it is forty-eight fifty-eight, which is the, the undeveloped lot mentioned in that letter. So I just always wanted to point out to the other board members because it was confusing me, those are the two lots that are owned by that person who wrote that letter. And then my, my other question is, I appreciate the picture you provided, Mr. Richardson, and it's the one on A2 of your application. And I think that's where you were saying that's a view of the backside of your existing garage on A2, of which the ridge board is, you just said, seven feet above. And if you were standing in that picture and you could reach up and touch that ridge board, do I understand that right?
Yeah, it's, it's the view on the backside of the garage is very low. It's twelve feet wide and about seventy, I would imagine it was ten, it's about seventy high.
All right, and if this proposed garage were approved, if I understand this right, the back of the proposed garage would be the same location of this picture, but it would be wider or extending more to the center of the property. And about how much higher would that reveal be on the proposed new garage than what's there now?
We submitted today, because we, we received the objection yesterday, so we submitted today a drawing of what the abutter's view would be with dimensions on it. I was wondering if that was available to be displayed at this time.
I, I don't, maybe that came through in an email. I, I, not in our application, and I think you mentioned it, we just submitted it today. I, I didn't know, Kate, is that something you could put on the screen? Is that?
Let me see what I can do.
I have it handy if you want me to share.
Yeah, I think that would be great, Rob.
The, the title of it is Garage West Elevation and then the date. But that's the filing, actually.
Yeah, we have it.
So the, the, that was, that would be what the view is for the neighbor.
Okay, thank you for that view. I appreciate that, myself. I, my, my questions aren't answered.
I just wanted to make sure I was reading, reading the height off that. Was it seventy-seven? The peak from the elevation?
Did you read it, Rob?
Oh, yes, it's, the, the, the new height would be, call it ten feet more than the existing one of seven feet. It's seventeen-seven, at least relative to the drawing. So, you know, there is a change, yes. You're looking at a gable end elevation versus, versus a blank clapboard wall and roof.
Thank you.
I'm good?
This is Jack and I'm good. Thank you for the answers.
Okay, thank you. Does any other board member have any questions, comments for the applicant? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And so that I get everyone's comments. Mr. Lionel? I will ask you.
Yeah, I, I had, the, the questions and concerns I had have been addressed by testimony and I've come around to being in favor of the proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara?
My, my questions were also answered, which was primarily the reasons why the garage, the new garage wasn't shipped over. I think those have been adequately addressed, given the way the property is situated, the need to use VR, the topography. And I would just add that a two-car garage is certainly very consistent with the neighborhood. The setbacks are also consistent with what we see in the neighborhood. The lot is somewhat smaller, so it's a little bit more challenging to locate it. And a twenty-four by twenty-four foot garage is certainly, you know, very standard for a two-car garage and frankly, much smaller than any that we've seen. So I support the application.
Thank you, Mr. Minkara. Mr. Boucher? I cannot hear, Mr. Boucher.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. JP.
JP ahead.
JP ahead.
We're not out, we're not out. And we're going to do day caller and user two.
Right there.
Right there.
Yeah.
Carter, you need to, just on you, call in user two. That's JP's audio.
Right there.
You go.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
All right, thank you. I also support the application. I had viewed the property. I got more clarification on the challenges of the photography and the property. And I really appreciate the rear elevation view of that. So with that, I support the application as it stands.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Knakis.
I'm also in support of the application for the same reasons.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carrier.
Well, I, I'm at the center here. I, I feel that the view from the abutter on the, on the west is, is drastically different with the two-story garage. I realize that if, if the garage were pushed back to meet the setback, no variance would be needed. A two-car garage could be built and it wouldn't look that much more imposing than, say, in the location that it is. But I'm, I try not to say, what do I think of that proposal if I lived at number two? Or if I was in a butter and I rely on testimony. And you may remember, there was a garage on the setback near where Mr. Shaw used to live at our last live meeting. And it was a very big proposal right up close to the lot line and the abutter. I was kind of horrified of it, but the abutter that was most impacted was like, hey, this is great. It's going to look great. I have no problem with it. And that testimony was enough to say, hey, I value that testimony and, you know, I can go for approval on it. And in this case, where we have the director butter really of two lots, you know, who is not happy with the imposition it'll make. I, I find that that gets traction with me, so I'll leave it at that. I don't, I don't find support for the application and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Carrier. Mr. Shaw.
I actually concur with Mr. Carrier. I have similar concerns and I, I mean, I think there's, there's a lot of things about this application that are helpful. But I think ultimately, when things are so close to setback and directly impactful to abutting neighbors. I think it's one thing when, you know, oftentimes placements of homes or such that, you know, those kind of encroachments are, aren't going to be that significant. So I think there's advantages of the, you know, the actual elevation, you know, kind of inset and, you know, the difference in elevations between the two properties. But it's still, you know, the structure is still, you know, on the order of, I forget the original width dimension, but I think we're talking at least another 10 or so feet, if not more. Width-wise, that this is going, but then additional 10 feet high, being, you know, what almost amounts to, you know, right on the property line, you know, once it off is about as close as you can get. So, you know, I think the question is, you know, I appreciate Mr. Minkara's point is, you know, two-car garages are kind of expected or typical now in this neighborhood. But, you know, I think if it's just the structure with being replaced that's there and that same size, that's, that would be, you know, something that's been expected and been there all along. But this expansion is still pretty significant. I just can't, can't support it.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. I. Mr. Lionel.
One thing that I just was thinking about is 190-31 for accessory uses and structures says that maximum height within 10 feet of property line is 12 feet. And if I understand the drawing correctly, it would be 17, more than 17 feet high, right up to the property line. Is that correct?
Mr. Falk.
Um, it's true that the drawing does state that it's 17 feet or so. But according to the building code, we measure the building height as the midpoint between the eve and the ridge. So whatever that halfway distance is, that's what we measure a building height as. I believe we've talked to the applicant and the architect about it. And my understanding that I believe that they met the overall height. Mr. Vorback maybe can explain it a little further, but I thought it did meet the height.
Yeah, as part of the application, I believe a section was submitted.
Excuse me, Mr. Vorback, could you hold up one second? Since we are in the public meeting part and not the public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
In order to get a response from Mr. Vorback, it would take a motion and a vote from the board to concur with that suggestion. And so I'm going to look to the board to see what their, what the will of the board is. If someone would like to make a motion, so we get the clarification on that.
Well, I, I'm good with Mr. Falk saying that the city looked at that and, and came to a decision. And how they came to that decision, I don't particularly care about. I just wanted to make sure that that particular rule is being followed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Falk.
Um, I think that this piece of paper was in everybody's package.
It was.
It's a very small drawing. I'm kind of showing it up here. It shows the midpoint of the eve and the ridge and it shows another line where 10 feet is back. Believe it was met.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to read, it's small.
Thanks, Carter. And thank you, Mr. Lionel. I think I also understood that when the conversation was going on, the applicant and the architect, they looked at different placements for the garage. And is, to my understanding, and maybe someone on the board can help with this. They did, they placed it where they did because the second car could not navigate and come into the garage based on that positioning. Is, am I under the correct assumption here? Does someone else have any other recollection? Mr. Minkara.
I recall hearing the same comment.
Thank you. And I see Mr. Shaw shaking his head. So based on the fact that utilization of the garage could not be accommodated in the altered position. It, for me, I understand the abutters issues around the aesthetics and the view. But the property owner's right to utilize their own property and utilize the garage as a garage for both sides of the garage, not just one, seems to come into play also. And based on that, I think that I will find in support for this application. So if anyone else has any other comments, if not, I would entertain a motion at this time. Mr. Boucher.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion for Daniel L. and Jane S. Richardson, revocable trust owners of 70 Berkeley Street, Chief 48 Lot 61, requesting a following variance as land use code Section 190-31. One, to encroach up to five feet into the six-foot required side setback, western property line. And two, to encroach up to five feet into the six-foot required side setback, northern property line. Both request to replace a non-performing 12 by 20 dash garage on a corner lot with a 24 by 24 detached two-car garage with storage above the R18 zone Ward 3. The approvals of this variance find that the variances needed to enable the applicant's purchase of property, given the special conditions of property. We talked about the topography issue, some of the pre-existing issues, the condition of the current garage. And that, again, that this garage and this property predated zoning, bearing, zoning, pre-zoning, this was pre-zoning structures. We find that the benefit, the benefits of applicant, applicants cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible. Again, the applicant did describe the fact that the garage was shifted over to more of the middle of the yard, that there would be a challenge with, with the cars coming in. And also did look at other options coming in off a sports street. But again, talking about elevation, excavation and the other obstacles that were in the way to do that. And, and in his estimation, their estimation was not feasible for this project. So we find that this cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible on the applicant's pursuit other than the variance. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values strongly possibly. We have no testimony or evidence of that in one way or the other. We find it's not contrary to public interest and that substantial justice would be served.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Do I have a second to that motion? Uh, Mr. Lionel, thank you. I will now call the roll on.
I actually made a chair.
Yes. Mr. Shaw.
If it, I just put this out there then before we vote. I, I would actually, at this point, I'm actually in support of one of the two. I'm in support of the, the one, the second one, which is for the northern property line. Because, and I, I'll just kind of get my reasoning here and now. But that's, that's already a 20-foot run that's existing with the same kind of encroachment. So that, and extending the fact that the abutter at number 72 Berkeley is in support and a limited additional encroachment. I'm actually in support of that, that variance request. So I don't know that it's going to matter in terms of, we could still just take them both and I'll, I won't support either. Support the, if it is, the both. But if we want to vote on each one separately, if it matters, I would vote in affirmative on one and the negative on the other.
Mr. Falk, does it make sense or should we split the motion?
I would suggest voting on each one separately.
Thank you. That was my assumption.
It'd just be cleaner.
I needed, yeah, since Mr. Shaw raised that comment with very sound logical reasoning behind it. It made sense to split it, but I wanted to get the correct viewpoint and that's why I turned to you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Falk. All right, Mr. Boucher, would you care to rescind this motion, restate your motion? And Mr. Lionel, would you be in concurrence with that?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Boucher.
I'll retract the motion that I just made and restate the motion. This will be for the first variance. I make a motion to approve the area variance for Daniel L. and Jane S. Richardson, revocable trust owners of 70 Berkeley Street. Chief 48 Lot 61, requesting the following variance to encroach up to five feet into the six-foot required side setback, western property line. We find that the variances need to enable the applicant's purchase of property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, we spoke about the topography and the garage predating zoning and the location of the garage and the condition of the garage. We found that the benefits of applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible. Again, we spoke about the other options that the applicant had looked at off a sport terrace. And we find that the method reasonable feasible for the applicant's pursuit other than a variance. We find that as in the spirit and intent of the ordinance, we find that will not adversely affect property values strongly possibly. We have no evidence for or against that. It's not contrary to public interest and that substantial justice would be served.
Thank you. And do I have a second to that motion, Mr. Lionel? Thank you very much.
Is this the fir-, this is the first motion about the western?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Um, okay, I will now take the vote. This is on the, on our variance sheet. It's number one. This is the motion we're doing on the western property line. Mr. Shaw.
I vote against.
Excuse me?
I vote against.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Mr. Carrier.
I vote in opposition. This is Jack Carew to number one, which is the western property line.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boucher.
I vote in support of the, of the variance.
Mr. Lionel.
I vote in opposition to the variance.
Okay. And Mary Ellen McKay, and I vote in support, but the motion fails. On variance number one, with a vote of three to two, three against, two in favor. Mr. Shaw, Mr. Carrier and Mr. Lionel voting in the negative. Now, Mr. Boucher, would you state your motion for variance number two?
Okay. Just want to make sure that this makes sense, making a motion at this point.
I know. I. Yeah, and I'm on the same page with you, but we split it out, so.
I don't understand. It, it makes sense.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure. I'm on the way, I gotta split it up a little bit. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion. To approve the area variance for Daniel L. and Jane S. Richardson, revocable trust owners of 70 Berkeley Street. Chief 48 Lot 61, requesting the following variance from, from land use code Section 190-31. To encroach up to five feet into the six-foot required side setback, northern property line. Both request to replace a non-performing 12 by 20 detached garage on a corner lot with a 24 by 24 detached two-car garage with a storage above the R18 zone Ward 3. We find that the variances.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Uh, we find that the variances need to enable the applicant's purchase of property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, we talked about topography, the garage predating zoning. The benefits of the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant's pursuit of the, in the variance. Again, we spoke about other, yeah, the applicant spoke about other options that they were on the property and the challenges that are existing on the property. We find it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values strongly possibly. We find it's not contrary to public interest and that substantial justice would be served.
And do I have a second, Mr. Lionel? Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I'll vote in support.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier.
I vote in opposition.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel.
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And Mary Ellen McKay also votes in favor. The one, we have the four to one vote. The vote in opposition is Mr. Carrier. At this point, Mr. Carter, would you like to speak to this?
Um, all right, this may have been confusing to some people. Maybe we can just summarize the motions, either to support or to not support these, these two variances. So the way I look at it, the first variance, the motion was made by Mr. Boucher to grant it. And that motion failed two to three. There are two people in support of the, of the motion to support it and three against. And then variance number two, the motion was also made to grant and that was approved four to one. That way, everybody else sees it?
Yes.
Variance number one is not supported. Variance number two is support.
Correct.
To make the long story short, just want to make sure everybody understands what was approved and what was not.
Okay, but my question is this, with two, with the vote split this way, one says you can build, the other says, no, you can't. So what do you do?
No, it means that they, that they either shift the garage or perhaps shorten it a couple of feet.
Ah, I got it. Okay, Mr. Richardson, as you've heard the discussion and you've heard the comments, you understand that the first portion of the variance requires some changes to be made that did not pass the board. The second variance, however, did. There's 30 days with which to appeal this decision. And I would think that any counsel, any advice on this, I would certainly contact Mr. Falk at his office. Give him a call, give him an email, and I'm sure his guidance will help direct you and Mr. Vorback at this point.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on. Is the board still good to go? We have people waiting here and I, I just, I want to make sure we continue on, even though we still have a pretty full agenda. People have been waiting. Is the board okay to go on? And Mr. Richardson, you can certainly sign out at this point.
Mary Ellen, can you hear me? This is Jack.
Yes, I can.
Uh, you know, I'm good to go on, you know, but just observing that we've been at it three and a half hours and we're halfway through the agenda. My math says it would be going on pretty darn late if we continue. Uh, I would just, you know, I, I could go either way. I think there's advantages to continuing on Thursday. There's advantages to finishing it tonight. Maybe we just walk around the board and see where folks are at.
Okay, then let me, and I also, aside from, you know, just asking the board, we have people that are sitting here that have been waiting. And so maybe their, you know, consideration of what they prefer to do too has to be part of this conversation. Mr. Falk.
Well, if you want my two cents worth, the last two cases are both a little over an hour. They're pretty lengthy. It's my opinion that the next, the next two cases are not going to be that, that long. So I, I know these folks have been sitting here since it was light out. Like, I would, I would suggest we just keep plowing through. I don't, I don't, I don't anticipate another case that's going to be as long as the last two have been. That's my opinion.
Well, that's the opinion of the chair, but I want to give the rest of the board their voice and so we will ask. Mr. Lionel.
Uh, can we take a five-minute break and then come back? I'd be willing to come back.
That's reasonable. Mr. Boucher.
Uh, continue on.
Mr. Shaw.
I'm fine with continuing. I think it's also possibly reasonable to ask if there is anybody with, especially one of those very last cases that they're okay, possibly waiting another hour and a half or more.
Uh, yep, that will be. Kate.
Madam Chair, I received a comment in chat from Gentleman Scott, who thanked Mr. Lionel for his input on a five-minute break and then continued on.
You're fitting in and out, but yes, I was going to do that. I just wanted to go through the rest of the board. Um, Mr. Minkara.
I'm, I'm fine going on at this point. I think another hour-long case, hour-plus is going to probably do me in, however.
Yeah, well, welcome to that club. Mr. Carrier, you're okay, you said?
Yeah, I, I'm okay to go on. Uh, you know, I, I'm okay with the five minutes and moving on and reassessing later on, like Mr. Minkara says.
Exactly. And Mr. Knakis.
I'd like to continue.
Okay, fine. Then we are going to take a five-minute break. It is 10:10. We'll see you all at 10:15. Case number six. And I apologize if I upset the pronunciation of your name, sir. Uh, my word, is it? Reges? Suhaag?
It's Regish Suhaag.
Thank you. At 60 Tennyson Avenue. Regish Suhaag owner, 60 Tennyson Avenue, Sheet B, Lot 363, requesting special exception from land use code Section 190-15. Excuse me, Table 15-1, parentheses number three, to maintain an after-the-fact accessory in-law dwelling unit. It's in the R18 zone, Ward 8. The floor, sir, is yours.
No stay, Madam Chair, and no stay to everyone. So I don't know whether you guys know, no must, you know, say the Indian salute, kind of thing. But, yeah, so basically what we are proposing out here is that this is after-the-fact unit. We bought this house on February 28th and asked for previous notice. Has this particular unit already designed and everything and there was a, talk as well out there. So considering all those factors, we found this unit usable for us, considering my parents are, they're in the, on. are, there is a, on those things, and they don't like anything non-vage, so they are pure vegetarian. They don't want, uh, eaten to be shared, so that's why they need a separate kitchen as well. Considering all those factors, I like the unit, I bought the particular unit, and then I realized that this unit is not legally authorized as of that moment. So I went to town to get it authorized so that it can be, uh, legal in lawsuit, and that's where I am standing right now. And this is within the, uh, permissible limits, and we are not changing any of land use code or anything, and I won't see any issues with the parking as well, considering this has a two-car garage, and there is at least two cars outside as well, just in case. But otherwise, I don't see any issue, uh...
Okay, thank you. Um, does anyone on the board have any questions? And Kate, can you lower that for me, please, so I can see the board? Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant on this special exception ADU? Mr. Boucher.
I think the only thing that we just gotta make sure is that they, uh, we have the accessory dwelling unit, uh, special conditions and that they, uh, will comply with those.
And that's a good point. Mr. Suhaag, have you seen the special conditions?
Oh, yeah, so when you say special conditions, let me be more understandable room there.
Um, I, I can read them and get your response to them for the record. The accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental and subordinate in extent, use and purpose to the primary structure and does not exceed seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet.
All right.
Two, the accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as the single-family dwelling.
All right.
Number three, the accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance of the single-family dwelling or in its conformity with the character of the neighborhood. No new entrance or exit to an accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed on the front or frontage side of the single-family dwelling. No new curb cut from the street shall be constructed. Exterior design of the accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling through architectural use of building forms, scale, and construction material.
That's perfectly better.
The owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessi- accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence.
All right.
The owner of the properties shall provide the city of Nashua with a covenant filing with the Halesboro County Registry of Deeds along with the appropriate filing fees, and the covenant shall read substantially as follows. What, Carter? You're muted, Carter. Yeah.
It, it, we're setting blank, like dash of dash means, then the person's name of their address, so it's like...
Oh, okay. So it would be Mr. and Mrs. Suhaag of sixty Tennyson Avenue, Nashua. Covenant and agrees to the property located at sixty, contains an accessory dwelling as defined by the city of Nashua Land Use Code, one-nine-zero dash two-six-six-four, Article forty-two, X L I I. That use of the property is permitted as a special exception granted by the zoning board of adjustment, and if we grant this, it would be tonight, um, for twenty-eight twenty. The continued use of the accessory dwelling unit is conditioned upon compliance with all current and subsequently adopted ordinances and statutes applicable to the property. Granting of a certificate of occupancy of the accessory dwelling unit shall be contingent upon receipt of the covenant and fees. Do you agree?
Yes.
One additional off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single-family house.
That, that is already there, right?
Okay. An interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit.
How does that would speak?
The single-family dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership, including by condominium ownership.
All right.
Thank you. An accessory dwelling units shall only be associated with single-family detached dwellings and shall not be associated with manufactured housing as defined in RSA six-seventy-four colon thirty-one.
All right.
Okay, the record showed that all the criteria for the special exception have been consented and agreed to. Um, does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Ding, click. Kate, do you have anything? I see nothing.
Madam Chair, I am seeing no hands raised and no comments made in regards to the case.
Thank you. Um, is anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this application?
I am seeing no hands raised.
Okay. And is anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? I have it, Carter.
Okay.
Um, I am going to read something into the record, and then, Carter, I'm going to ask a question. I reside, this is from Richard...
Oh, good.
Mashigian. I reside at seventy-eight Tennyson Avenue in a but said property. I see no need to change the land use code for an in-law apartment. I have no objection for use by a parent or grandparent. I would object if its purpose was to house an individual or party with or without financial consideration in that unit other than a parent or grandparent. Additionally, I am concerned about the parking situation. In earlier years, it was used for commercial vehicles. It looked like a parking lot which detracted from the neighborhood. It will be hard to police this situation, but I rely on good intentions of the resident. I would suggest the planning department drive by the address to get a sense of the concern that neighbors have. And it's signed Richard A. Mashigian, seventy-eight Tennyson Avenue, Nashua, New Hampshire, zero-three, zero-six-two. Um, would you consider this letter, since he, he states categorically, "I have no objection for use by a parent or grandparent," um, and since this is for a parent, um, is this a classic objection? Is this, you know, a modified objection? And how do you object to an ADU? Mr. Carter.
May I speak, or?
Yes, I said, Mr. Falk, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, there's two parts to the public meeting where people can speak in favor or with questions or concerns. I would probably put this more towards questions or concerns, more like questions. Um, you know, they say they have no, no real issues with it, but I think they're just concerned about the parking, and they, they had some issues with their commercial vehicles parked in the driveway years ago, which detract from the neighborhood. They don't say that that is existing now. Um, I drove by the property. I didn't see any evidence of a lot of trucks or commercial vehicles there. Um, I was wanting to put the sign out on the property, and I, I, I parked in the street for a few minutes and kind of looked around for my car, so, um... And we don't regulate whether people pay or don't pay for an in-law apartment. That's not part of our ordinance, and same thing, there's no more familial relationships that, it has to be a family member. So it can be a parent, grandparent, friend from college, really doesn't matter to us or the ordinance. So I just think this, this neighbor wrote some things that they just have some questions on. I wouldn't really say it's really in opposition, but I think they just have some concerns and questions and want them addressed.
And that's why I asked the question, Carter, because it sounded like it was right in the middle. It sounded like it was in favor, and then it had some concerns, some issues. So it wasn't, I am opposed, nowhere do I see somebody categorically state that.
Yeah, and accessory dwelling units are still single-family homes. They're still taxed and assessed as single-family homes with an accessory dwelling unit. So, um, you know, we, we still look at it as a single-family.
Okay, thank you.
Special exceptions are permitted.
Does any, um, okay, so, having said the last questionable email question, concern, um, are there any other voices of concern? Kate, I think you said there were none. Okay, so at this point, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Does... Through the board. Mr. Courier.
Here I am. Uh, I, uh, am in support of this application. I, I would like to say that, uh, interestingly enough, I mean, I did do a drive-by as that letter of somewhat opposition spoke about, and my take is exactly like Mr. Falk in that a previous owner, uh, had parked commercial vehicles there, which I think would detract from the neighborhood. Uh, that is, is not, that is not the case now. I think the home, uh, you know, meets the criteria, no new front entrance, uh, the parking is available, uh, and so it meets all the criteria, and, you know, it's less than seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet. So I, I, I think it meets all the criteria and, and, and I'm good with it. It's what we're encouraged to a, approve as, you know, the law has been come down from the state, so I'm, I'm a, I'm a go.
Thank you, Mr. Courier. Mr. Minkara.
I support the application.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Boucher.
I also support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I do as well.
Thank you. And Mr. Lionel.
I support the application.
Thank you, sir. Um, I too am in support of the application, and I would ask, would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Rijes Suhaag, addresses sixty Tennyson Avenue, uh, sheet B, lot three-six-three, requesting special exception from land use code section one-ninety dash fifteen, table fifteen dash one, item three, maintain an after-the-fact accessory dwelling unit. This is in the R-eighteen zone, Ward eight. Uh, this is listed in the table of uses. The board finds it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair, getting late, pedestrian safety. Uh, it will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer or other municipal systems. The applicant testifies that special regulations are fulfilled, and the board believes that it will not impair integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of residents. Therefore, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
And do I have a second? Mr. Shaw. Mr. Courier.
I vote in approval of this special exception.
Mr. Shaw.
I vote in approval.
Mr. Boucher.
I vote in approval.
Mr. Lionel.
Approval.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also am in support. I approve also.
Did Mr. Falk have something to say?
Uh, excuse me?
Mr. Falk raised his hand.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm all set. I'm all set.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I just wondered if you were gonna do the roll call and then, and then...
I did.
We took care of it, so I'll say.
Okay, I'm getting used to this, you know, it's a little different, but I'm getting used to it. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Suhaag, your application has been approved. Um, and so we wish you good luck and, um, you know, thank you. As we say to everyone, anyone could appeal this, there's thirty days, but, you know, basically you're good to go. If you have questions, comments, concerns, please contact Mr. Falk, and thank you for waiting as long as you did. Um, we're gonna move on to the next case, but I would like to, based on information we've all received, um, address case number ten, a little bit out of order. If case number ten, um, is states they are okay with reconvening on Thursday night, do we want to go ahead and address that and, you know, let the man maybe leave so he doesn't have to sit and wait for us to do this? Or do we just want to follow an order? I'm inclined to address this now. What's the board's feeling? They have requested that they would like to table this to our next, or reconvening, oh, he would like to reconvene Thursday night. I didn't read that right. Okay.
Not, hello?
Yes, I hear you, Scott.
This is number ten. I'm not requesting a reconvening. I'm only saying we were willing to do so.
Oh, okay, then never mind.
Your guise of fatigue.
Okay, sorry, I read that incorrectly.
No worries.
We're moving on to case number seven. Mary Lee Allison. Hey, Mary Lee Allison owner, K A S P Builders LLC, twenty-six Loveville Street, sheet one-hundred, lot sixty-three, requesting variance from land use code section one-nine-zero dash one-six, table one-six dash three, to encroach three-point-five feet into the twenty-foot required rear yard setback to remove an existing deck and construct and attached twenty by fifty-point-five foot one-story addition on the right side of the house. This is the RC zone and it's Ward six.
Mary Lee, can you hear me?
Yes, you may have, you now have the floor.
Thank you. How much time do I have?
Fifteen minutes.
Thank you. I am representing, um, my client, Lee Allison, who is a retired individual.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Kathy Abby Phillips, twenty-seventh Shattuck Lane, Hollis, New Hampshire. And I represent KASP Builders LLC, and my client is Lee Allison at Loveville Street, Loveville Street, New Hampshire. Can you hear that?
Yes.
Okay. So we are requesting a variance for a one-story addition off of her existing home, and we have not met the twenty-foot requirements on the back of the lot. We are three and a half feet short of that requirement, and we are requesting a variance
And did you want to address the points of law?
Uh, no, it's, it's, it's a twenty-foot variance, the back lot. We need twenty feet, we have seventeen and a half feet. I guess I would like to ask the board what they feel is the problem with this.
Okay, um, Kate, can you put this down for me so I can see the board? Okay, um, Kate, can you put this down for me so I can see the board? Thank you. And ask the board, um, does anyone have any questions of this applicant?
Adam Chair Jack.
Mr. Shaw, I see your hand now. I had it covered. I'm sorry.
Actually, actually, Mr. Lionel had it up before me.
Oh, I didn't see it. I'm sorry. The screen's moving. Your, your pictures shift. So I apologize, Steve. You were here, now you're there.
That's okay. I, I, I simply wanted to, to, uh, to mention that it, it's not that the board has a problem. The, the ordinance specifies setbacks for different, uh, zones in the city. And the, what we're here for is to hear requests for uh, variations from those setbacks and other regulations. So that's, that's what this is all about. Um, and the, with the request about points of law, there are, what for, uh, an area variant, for any variance, there are five points of law that we need to, to cover about, uh, whether it's actually needed, whether it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, uh, talking about property values, public interest and, and substantial justice. So these are all things that the board considers when deciding whether to grant or deny a variance. Uh, I just wanted to make sure you understood that because it sounded like you didn't quite understand what the process was.
I, I totally agree. I did not understand.
I had thought so myself because, um, it, it's not just about three and a half feet. It's about ordinances or laws, rules, the statutes that we work within. And you're coming within that as sixteen and a half feet. Yeah, if you're three and a half feet off. And so asking you for an explanation, we have the application, we can read. We also see that the homeowner is retired, but these are the things that probably should be addressed so that the board understands, um, completely the rationale behind wanting to deviate, which is what Mr. Lionel was referring to. This is a deviation from the actual statute, the ordinance.
Okay.
In particular, in particular, we want to know, why is there a request, you know, why is there a need to, uh, to encroach the three and a half feet?
Uh, because the homeowner is retired and she wants a, uh, a first floor bedroom and bath and an entrance from her detached garage. And, um, how can I say this? Um, let's see. It's a, a one story addition. And if we move it forward, it will encroach on her existing kitchen. And there will be no light in the front part of the house. So by moving it back three and a half feet, she will have light to her kitchen, her existing kitchen.
Thank you. The explanation was very helpful. Mr. Minkara.
So a, along similar lines, if I'm reading this correctly, this is a very large addition. It looks as though it's over fifty feet, uh, in, in length. Uh, did you consider a somewhat shorter structure? It seems quite large for a, a bedroom and a bathroom addition.
Um, I can barely hear you, but I think I know what you're asking. You're asking if it be considered a shorter addition?
Yes, that's correct, Kathy.
All right. If we do a shorter addition, the existing house with the windows gets no natural light from a design and a, you know, in-house perspective.
Uh, if I could, if I may, I, I didn't suggest moving the addition forward. I said, did you consider a shorter addition, one that is less than fifty feet in length? Uh, given the fact that it seems quite large for a bedroom and a bathroom.
But if we do a shorter addition, she cannot access her garage. The idea is that if you're an elderly person and you can still drive, when you have a detached garage, you could enter the house and into a mudroom and be in the house without having to shovel and deal with ice.
I see hands by Mr. Shaw and Mr. Lionel. I saw Mr. Shaw first. Mr. Minkara, are, do you need any follow-up? Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
So, yeah, I'm, I want to still kind of follow up on what Mr. Minkara was saying. And I guess I'm really struggling with, I mean, unfortunately, there's a couple of things about this. We don't have any kind of even detail to show us like what the rough layout might be of this addition. But I guess what I'm, and a couple, and a couple of other things I'm not understanding is you're talking about access from the garage. And if I'm relooking at the drawing, the garage remains detached, I believe. Maybe you're have a covered walkway or something, but I don't see that the addition is connecting to the garage. But ultimately, what I'm not really understanding is why you can't keep the front part of the proposed addition where it is and just shorten the overall length by three and a half feet. So you'd be at forty-seven feet deep on the addition and you wouldn't need the encroachment into the setback. So what this board typically need to do is understand what's special about the property that, that's going to require the relief from, from this kind of setback. And I'm, I'm just not understanding it right now.
I can, I can just barely hear you. Um, I'm sorry, because of technology now and the things we have to deal with, I'm trying to do the best that I can. Um, but we're talking about three and a half feet. And if you move that forward on the addition, there will be no light in her existing kitchen. So we're asking, um, if you look at the whole property and the surroundings around the property with all the encroaching, um, existing buildings, you don't feel it's got a nega, I'm sorry, negative, negative effect maybe around her at all.
Can I, this is, this is the homeowner. Can I say a few things?
Please do, Lee.
Um, this is Lee Allison, Mary Lee Allison residing at twenty-six Level Street. The purpose of this extension is to give me a first floor master bedroom, bathroom, a laundry room and a mudroom. I have, the, the house was built in nineteen twenty-two. It has no storage, no closets on the first floor. Um, the laundry is in the basement. I'm getting older. Stairs are becoming a problem. I want to build a first floor extension that gives me, um, first floor livability with a laundry room, a closet, a mudroom and an entryway via a covered walkway into the garage so that I do not have to shovel to get to the car. Um, we looked at a lot of designs. Um, I have an existing sunroom that I did, that I wanted to replace with a little bit with basically the same width, but a little bit, or wider, but the same depth. Um, and we can, we did look at moving the whole structure forward. But as Kathy said, I would lose the, the, the one and only, um, window into the kitchen. Um, so this gives me the living space in addition to the first floor that makes me comfortable for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years without having to leave my home.
Mr. Shaw, are you done?
Yes, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lionel, I saw your, your hand. I just didn't want you
That's fine. Okay, first of all, I, I want to make sure you understand, um, when we get requests like this, they're usually accompanied with a, a drawing of what the interior of the addition is going to look like and where things are going to line up. Uh, all we've been presented with is a rectangle, um, that overlaps the existing garage somewhat.
Excuse me?
Uh, excuse me.
No, excuse me, Kathy. The, um, Mr. Lionel has the floor.
When I'm done, you, you are welcome to speak. Okay? Um, the, nobody has suggested moving the addition forward. We have simply, some of us have suggested, uh, shortening it three and a half feet. It would still overlap the garage. It would still provide perhaps the possibility of, of entry into the garage. But we have no idea because there aren't, there's no diagram of what the interior of this addition looks like. And my recommendation would be to table this application to the next meeting, giving the applicant time to come back to us with a, a drawing, a layout of the interior of the space so we can understand what's being asked for. Because as it is now, um, I wouldn't approve this because there is just this rectangle. And when we keep asking about shortening it, we get answered to a different question that wasn't asked.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. I, I concur with Mr. Lionel. It would have been my suggestion after, um, the board had spoken. What we get is a blueprint. We get drawings of showing us the lengths, the widths, the heights, so that we can see where everything is lined up, how it's going to look, how it's going to impact not only the property, but how it's going to impact the others' property. And we don't have any of that. And so in order to make an informed decision, we need more information. And so my question to the homeowner is this. Are you willing to go back, get this information and provide it to the board so that this can go to the next meeting?
Of course. Um, I was not aware that we had to have a floor plan layout. Uh, I apologize for that. We obviously misunderstood the requirements for, uh, for the request.
Okay, so that then would be, is tabling this to May twelfth? Will that give you enough time to put together a drawing?
We've got it done. We have the drawings done. We just
Oh, you just, okay.
We have the floor plan layout. Um, the answer to the shortening takes away from the space needed for a master bathroom, a laundry room and a, and a, um, um, a mudroom.
Okay, but see now, what we need is, we need the, um, the visual, the actual proof.
I understand. I understand what you're asking for. We have that drawing.
Can I say something?
Um, can I say something? One minute, Kathy. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify and I understand it's not obvious. It's not technically a requirement. You didn't, you didn't not do something correctly. It's just that from a standpoint of supporting documentation and our ability to understand your argument for why perhaps it's not, uh, practical to shorten that overall length. The floor plan will help us, I believe, significantly. So I just want you to understand that Kathy didn't long, it just said for us to be perhaps possibly comfortable enough, that will be very helpful information. So that's, that's why we, we brought it up and are so interested in it.
Does that help you, Kathy? Now you may speak.
Thank you. I, um, I gave the entire uh, floor plan and the layout to the building department. And it was understood to me that that was given to you.
Oh.
I never got
Mr. Falk?
I never got a copy of it.
And
Okay.
and I have to ask you, I sent five pictures today on all sides of the property. And they told me that you got those. Did you receive those?
Yes, we got the pictures.
All right. And can I ask you, um, I, I, I don't quite understand if I give you the floor print uh, of the addition and that we're within three and a half feet of the back. Um, what is the question here?
The question is the ordinance. And the question is informational. The board needs to see all the information before it can make an informed decision. And right now, we do not have all the information. So, um, what I'm going to do is ask for a member of the board to, um, offer a motion or I will, I will offer a motion to table this to the meeting on May twelfth, twenty twenty. In fact, I did. I just made the motion to table. What I do need now is a second. I see that from Mr. Lionel. I will now take a roll call of the board. Mr. Courier.
Well, I've had my electronic hand up for a while. I think it might have been off your screen. So before I, yeah, I'd like to speak about this before I make a, 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 my vote on the motion. Is that okay?
Okay, we're in the voting mode, but I'll put us in discussion. That's fine.
Okay, um, there, there's another element on the, the application, which is number five. Special conditions exist such that the literal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship. Uh, in, in my opinion, not in my opinion, by law, this is, this applies to the land. What's the special condition of the land, of the lot that requires this, um, you know, this encroachment? And, and in my opinion, like, while I, I'm delighted that the homeowner is retired and, and stuff like that, that, that's not the criteria that we, that, that we make a judgment by. We make a judgment by the special conditions on the land. And so, uh, while I am voting favorably to table this, I, 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 that question needs to be addressed, as I would say, properly by the law versus what it is now. And, and I would also just like to try to answer a little better the importance in this case of the, the internal, not the internal, but the footprint of the home is perhaps that footprint shows that the three and a half feet in, in, in our voting collective opinion is crucial to accomplish the goals of reasonable living. Or suppose someone might think, well, that's, that goes from a really large bedroom to just a large bedroom. And that's not a, that's not a reason. So in, for this particular application, I think the board is, is, is saying, you know, just why is that three and a half feet important and the internal footprint?
Would answer that. So I just wanted to get that out on the table, but I get back to say I vote favorable to table.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lionel.
I'm in favor of tabling.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I'm in favor of tabling.
Mr. Boucher.
I'm in favor of tabling.
And I am also in favor of tabling. So the motion passes. This will be tabled to the next meeting on May twelfth, twenty twenty. And we, as we've done this, we're, we're putting it back in your hands so that you can answer the questions you've heard tonight present that blueprint so that we have it, but also pay attention to Mr. Curry. but also pay attention to Mr. Courier's words about the special conditions that exist based on the property. So we will see you in two weeks when we meet next. Mr. Falk.
There will be another notification. There'll be a new WebEx email with a new password and everything. So that will be sent out. So Kathy and Lee, you will, you will get another one for the next meeting as well.
Okay, good. And if you have questions in the interim, please get in touch with Mr. Falk.
I'm sorry, get in touch with who?
Mr. Falk, Carter Falk.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So we will move on to the next case and we will see you May 12th. And you are free to go ahead and sign off. Thank you.
Ms. McKay, who was the second on that motion? I didn't touch that. I'm sorry.
And the Steve. It was Mr. Lionel.
Who made the motion then?
I did.
Okay, got it. Sorry. I'm good. Let's.
It's late. We understand. Okay, moving on. Case number eight. Okay, George and Tara Cincella, Seven Hadley Drive, owners. Sheet D Lot 485 requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area. Forty percent permitted, fifty-five percent proposed to construct a detached 24 by 28 foot garage on right side of property. It's the R40 Zone Ward 5. Mr. and Mrs. Cincella, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Cincella from Seven Hadley Drive. This is my wife Tara. From the drawing, we're proposing adding a two car detached garage to store vehicles. We have four people living here, but we have seven vehicles. And we have a two car attached garage. This proposal is to add a two car detached garage just to the right of the lot. The areas we're looking for is for the accessory usage. What complies that right now is, as you can see, a pool and two decks next to the pool as well as a shed up in the upper right corner of the lot. This is not contrary to other properties in the neighborhood or other properties with detached which means the vehicle we propose or have in law additions. I think what's important to us is to have it match the character of the house in the neighborhood. It is a, a, I'll call it a model, but not a very good model of what it would look like when we were complete. That kind of summarizes it. Any questions?
Okay.
By the way, thank you guys for staying so late. This is really.
Well, you're welcome. Does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicants? And if you're using the little chat feature with your hand, I cannot see that. But if you put your hand up in front of you, I can see that. Mr. Courier.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify. The drawing looks like it's a proposed one car garage. And I'd like to clarify the height and whether it's one car garage or two story proposed garage.
The garage will be a two car garage with a storage area above.
And what is the height of that ridge board or the reveal board? Some people say. I'm just trying to get a feel for whether it has the look of a two car, I mean, two story or one story structure.
So the, the house, I love you guys have the model, but the house is a gable end house. And so we're trying to keep the pitch of the house the same as the attached two car garage. The roof pitch is kind of aligned. Current roof pitch is a nine by 12, so we probably have a nine by 12. Would that be as far as?
Yeah, Mr. Shaw has put it up so we can see it.
Okay. There you go. Sorry, it's not exactly the scale.
Uh, yeah, okay. I, I think Mr. Shaw is probably showing what's in our application, which is like a nice symmetric view of, of the structure.
Right.
And, you know, I have just, again, I'm looking right at that view. And my question remains the same. Looking right at that view, I could interpret that. That could end up as a two story structure or a one story structure. And I'm just, you have the 23 feet by 11 and 3/4 wide, 28 feet long, and 9 and 3/8 inches to wall height. And just wondering what it is to that ridge board on the top. That's like a key dimension for me that, that I don't see there.
Yeah, so, uh, because I haven't determined that exactly. But the nine by 12 pitch and, and the ridge line or the soffit is about 11 feet off the ground. And that's about the total height. I know there's, I know there's there's a zoning rule that you have to have, it's got to be below certain height and it will meet that.
Okay, I guess maybe Mr. Falk could jump in. Is, is there a height limitation? And I ask these questions based on past experience of proposed garages that, you know, are viewed as a one story and they end up, you know, kind of being like a barn and people kind of get upset because they're a lot bigger than what we think. And I was just wondering, is there a height limitation on a structure like that? Is it 18 feet or is it dependent on whether it's two story, Mr. Falk?
Carter here. There is a, a height limit for accessory structures at 20 feet. But with accessory structures like this, we measure the height between, what the value is between the ridge and the eve. So I, I don't think this is going to be more than 30 feet high between the midpoint between the eve and the ridge. I mean, the, the height to the eve is nine feet 3/8 inches. So it's not going to be another 11 feet to the midpoint of that, of that roof pitch. So I, I think it definitely meets the accessory height, accessory structure height. You know, we looked at this. The only thing we saw that they had a variance for was the accessory use area because they do have a pretty large pool and like two decks in the, in the back. And unfortunately for them, they were like 55% over the accessory use area of 40%. They were 55%. But it meets the setback, meets the height, all those issues. Their driveway won't be wider than 24 feet because the, the house is set back pretty far from the road. So they're not going to have a 48 foot wide driveway. It's going to be 24 feet. And then they may have a little bit of it standing out towards the new garage. But they'll meet the driveway width. They'll meet the, the building height setbacks. The setback for this is only six feet to the side property line, 20 feet to the front, six feet in the rear. They've got a very large piece of property. They'll meet all their setbacks. It's just, it's just the accessory use area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara.
So following up on that, I, I see that we're looking at a difference of between 40% and 55%. This is a question for either Carter or the applicant. Could you tell me how many square feet we're talking about between 40 and 55%? What does that translate into?
Square footage of the house is about 25.
I can tell you what I'm going on that is whether or not a smaller structure was contemplated and whether or not a smaller structure would make the difference.
Mr. Falk might have the answer to one of your questions. Mr. Minkara.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the swimming pool and the deck is about 670 square feet. Hey. I'm reading here. I had my notes for the, the detached garage would be about 576 square feet. 766 square feet existing, so it's 1,342 square feet, which is 53% of a 2,500, 2,508 square foot house. So they're over by. It's late. I'm trying to do my math in my head while everybody's staring at me. My bedtime is normally nine o'clock. Trust me. I, I go to bed early. Need to be asleep, you know. So, so, okay, the house is 2,508 square feet. So 40% of that is 1,003 square feet. So they would be at 1,300, about 1,342 square feet. That's according to my very late, very late calculations here.
So does that mean they're about 300 feet over with the condition?
Over the 40%, right.
Okay. Thank you.
They also have an acre lot and there's no, no issue with setbacks and things like that.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I was going to say there, there, the picture of the deck and the pool, you can see how large the, the decks are in the pool. That, that takes up an awful lot of space in the back already, so.
No further questions?
Madam Chair, I do not see any hands raised or any comments.
Neither do I. Okay, then I will see if anybody here or present has, would like to speak in favor of this application.
Madam Chair, I am seeing no hands raised and no comments in chat.
Thank you. Mr. Falk, I saw you raise your hand.
I was just going to say that we had no phone calls or emails either way, in favor or in opposition.
Yeah. And so now I will ask if anybody here wants to speak in opposition or with questions and concerns about this application.
Madam Chair, I see no hands and no messages in chat.
Thank you. So based on that, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And ask, Mr. Hinakis, any discussion?
No, I think I'm in favor of the variance.
Thank you very much. Mr. Minkara.
I, I really can't support the variance. I, I just didn't see any justification given. I didn't see anything that addressed, you know, hardship on the property, any special circumstances, other than desire to have another two car garage. If there were no garage, I would probably look at it differently because I do believe having a garage is normal and customary. But building a freestanding two car garage when there already is a two car garage, I, I just didn't see any justification for a variance whatsoever.
Okay. Mr. Boucher.
I'll, I'll support the, the variance. I, I, again, I don't, in, in my opinion, the support I'm giving you to it is I think the homeowner explained that there are several people living there. There are multiple vehicles trying to garage some of those. Again, it's a pretty large lot. And again, I don't see any other, I don't, I guess I don't find anything that I would, you know, feel like I need to deny the application for. So I'm supporting the application as soon as.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I'm in support of it. I think the large lot is what makes the difference for me.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I've been struggling with the application. You know, on, on one hand, I, I do see it as Mr. Minkara does. I really don't see hardship on the property other than the desire. You know, I mean, on the other hand, you know, in looking at the, the very nicely manicured property, I mean, you don't really see or know there's a pool or deck in the back. I'm just saying if, if that wasn't present, they could probably build this by right because it wouldn't be, you know, an overage on, 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 you know, that they're asking for. And, you know, so I don't think you really know the pool and the deck is in the back. And that's kind of a mitigating factor for me. So I'm, I'm, I guess I'm on the fence on this and, you know, appreciate hearing the other opinions of the board.
Okay, fine. And I too am in favor. I mean, it's kind of strange with having the two garages. Mr. Minkara, I brought up a good point. However, it's an acre. It's a large lot. And as Mr. Courier noted, you don't see the pool. You don't see the deck. It's not readily visible. And if they didn't have a deck or a pool, they could do this without us. And so I support the application. And so now if somebody would like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make motion to approve the area variance for George and Tara Cincella of Seven Hadley Drive, Sheet D Lot 485, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area of 40% permitted, 55% proposed to construct a detached 24 by 28 garage on, on a right side of the property. It's in the R40 Zone Ward 5. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's possession of property given the special conditions of the property. Again, the other accessory, accessory uses were the large pool and the large deck. And I'm going to discuss the fact that this is on an, on an acre sized lot. So the lot is pretty large. We find that the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within a spare intent of the ordinance will not, it will not directly affect the property values surrounding parcels, not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Courier.
I approve, vote to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
I approve.
Mr. Shaw.
I'm in favor.
Mr. Boucher.
I'm in favor also.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I am also in favor. That is five votes in the affirmative. And Mr. and Mrs. Cincella, congratulations, you have gotten your variance. And again, as we tell everyone, there is that 30 day window of appeal. Any questions or comments, please reach out to Mr. Falk. And good luck with your project. And your property is beautiful. And thanks for being here.
Thank you guys very much. We really appreciate it. And thanks for staying so late at night with us.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Healthy.
Yeah, you too.
You too. We will move on to case number nine. We're in the home stretch, folks. And the applicant is, okay, I'm thinking Deion, Deionis?
Deionis.
Deionis, Deionis, I hope I'm correct. Deionis Penner. Dionis Penner, owner, 175 Concord Street, Sheet 135 Lot 1, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, parentheses number three, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit in basement. It's the RA Zone and it's Ward 3. Mr. Penner, you have the floor, sir, and thank you so much for still being here.
Oh, thanks so you do.
Okay, you want to explain your application to the board? It's your turn to present.
In the basement, it's our 16 living space downstairs. And they had the entry, main door, have the parking, have a bedroom, a bathroom. The only thing that's missing is the kitchen. That's why we are asking for the variance.
Okay, what's a special exception? And are you aware of all of the criteria, the nine criteria, for the special exceptions for an accessory dwelling unit?
Yeah, I just heard, you just said it a while back, but I didn't read them.
So I'm going to have to read this into the record and have you assent, I think. Carter, can he assent to all nine criteria en masse, or should they be read individually?
If he's aware of them and he believes that he's met all them, I mean, I've looked at the application and the plan, he's at 500 square feet. It's the only one in there, he owns the property. It's my belief from what we have that everything is met, but if you want to get some verbal concurrence from Mr. Penner that he meets them all, that would probably be good, all en masse. I mean, he's aware of them.
Mr. Penner.
Yes?
You are aware that the accessory dwelling unit should be clearly incidental and subordinate in extent use and purpose to the primary resident structure and not exceed 750 square feet? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. The accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as the single-family dwelling.
Yes.
The accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance of the single-family dwelling or in its conformity with the character of the neighborhood. No new entrance or exit to the accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed on the front of frontage side. No new curb cut from the street shall be constructed. The exterior design of the accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling through architectural use of building form, scale, and construction materials.
Yes.
The owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence.
Yes.
The owner of the property shall provide the city of Nashville with a covenant. You are aware of the covenant, yes?
Yes.
One additional off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single-family home.
Yes.
Yes, or no? Yes?
Yes. Yes.
An interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit.
Yes.
The single-family dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership, including by condominium ownership.
Okay, yes.
And finally, accessory dwelling unit shall only be associated with single-family detached dwellings and shall not be associated with manufactured housing as defined in RSA 674:31.
Yes.
Thank you. Kate, if you could put that down, your drawing, so I could see the board. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Penner? Seeing no hands, no questions. I'll ask if anybody is present who would like to speak in favor of this application.
Madam Chairman, this is Kate, I am seeing no hands or comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone present with concerns, questions, or opposition to this application?
Madam Chairman, this is Kate, again, I am seeing none.
Thank you. Then, seeing none and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Does the board have any comments it would like to make on the application? Seeing none, okay. And noting for the record that all nine criteria, the special exception, have been assented to by the owner. Would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Dionis Penner, 175 Concord Street, Sheet 135 Lot 1, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, number three, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit in the basement in the RA Zone, Ward 3. We find that it is listed in table of uses. It will not create undue traffic congestion or underly impaired pedestrian safety. It will not overload public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal system. The special regulations are fulfilled. The accessory dwelling unit special regulations or exceptions, special regulations. The nine points were ascended by the applicant. It will not impair integrity or the art of character of neighborhood to be detrimental to the health or welfare of residents. So we're going to make a motion to approve the special exception.
Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you, sir. I will now call the roll. Mr. Courier.
I vote to approve the special exception.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
Approve.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Approve.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I am also in favor. That is a five to zero vote in favor. Mr. Penner, congratulations, you have gotten your special exception. And as we say to everyone, you may or may not have somebody who wants to appeal within 30 days. May happen, may not happen. If you have questions, comments, concerns, please reach out to Mr. Falk. And he will be there to help you. But thank you for hanging tough.
Thank you all.
Stay safe.
Okay, good night.
Thank you, thank you.
You are free to go. Okay. We are at case number 10, we made it, folks. And so we will read this one into the record. Okay, Nashua 449 Realty Ventures LLC. Looks like in care of Charles River Realty Group owner. Stones Number One Social Applicant, 449 Amherst Street, Sheet H Lot 35, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-108, parentheses C, parentheses 1, to exceed maximum law sign area, 45.87 square feet permitted. One is existing sign at 43.75 square feet. One additional 43.75 square foot sign proposed for a total of 87.5 square feet. The GB Zone, Ward 2. And is somebody here to speak to this application?
Yes, I'm here, I believe Scott should also be here.
Who is on here?
My name is Robert Tuttle, I'm over here. I am the sign builder.
And I still need your address, sir, for the record.
My, the company address?
Actually... Carter, company or his home address? Nobody's ever asked me that question.
His company address is fine.
It's 119 Herbert Street, Framingham, Mass.
Okay, and Scott, are you here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I need your name and address for the record also.
Scott Plath, P L A T H, 52 Lawrence Drive, Lowell, Mass.
Okay, thank you, I see you again, makes it easier. If, Scott, will you be doing the presenting, or will it be Mr. Tuttle?
I suppose Mr. Tuttle can answer all the questions if there are technical issues.
Well, we lost him, losing people. Okay, Mr. Tuttle, did you want to present your application, sir, to the board?
Sure. What our client wants to do is put up the proposed additional signage on the side of the building. There was previously, there's previously awnings with the business name on that side of the building, but the awnings have been removed. So we'd like to put up an additional sign on the side so it can be seen when you're coming up the street.
We have a sentence in one person, right?
If somebody else is, if you're both up standing at the podium, in effect, and you would both like to speak, Scott, you will need to, again, state your name and your address for the record, and you both are sharing this 14 minutes you have left.
Okay, thank you. This is, this is a plath. And yes, as Bob said, there was already a previous signage on both the front and side of the building. Essentially, have two two fronts because we face east on 101A as you approach the building. So we would like to just maintain that exposure with a tasteful sign that has, that will obviously, we believe will add beauty to the plaza, a sense of style, and also help us help us get successful in Nashville when we open, hopefully, in the weeks to come.
Okay. Mr. Tuttle, you're with your presentation also?
Yeah, what I would just wanted to add is the, on this, on the side of the building, there is street, there is plenty of street frontage on that side of the building where it is on a corner lot. So I'm not sure how that affects the determination.
Okay, thank you. Can you put your drawings down so I can see the board? And then just ask them, do any members of the board have any questions about this application? Mr. Falk, you have your hand, you wanted to speak?
I have to explain it real quick. Okay, it's a corner lot, but we only do the frontage based on what's facing Amherst Street. So there's 30 feet, 7 inches of building frontage. And this only district, they get one and a half times the building frontage. That's a common wall sign for allotment in the GB and HB zones. I think you probably heard that in many other variances in the past. So 30 feet, 7 inches times one and a half, they're allowed 43.75 square feet. And they had, I'm sorry, they get 45.87 square feet permitted. They got a sign permit already for 43.75 square feet. They want another sign at 43.75 square feet. So it'll be two identical sized signs on the corner of the building, one facing 101 and one facing the side street. That's really what they're looking for.
Thank you.
They're allowed 45.27, they want 87s.
Okay, does anybody on the board have any questions? Mr. Shaw.
Question for Mr. Falk, it was mentioned about that there was the name on the awning that was previously there. Did that kingdom signage feature, or was that one of those things that might not have actually been accounted for?
Yeah, Mr. Falk, the question was addressed or pointed to you.
Okay, I don't believe that the previous restaurant ever got a variance for additional sign sign area. So, and I'm not really, I don't really remember exactly how the text was oriented on those awnings. It may have been something small on the drip flap, or it may have been something on the awning itself, and that's all they had. I don't remember exactly what it had. So all I know is that they did not receive a variance for what they had. So, you know, this request is submitted where it seeds the ordinance, and that's why they're here for this particular variance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any, I don't remember either, Carter. Does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Courier.
Yeah, I guess, I'm not sure if the question is maybe for the applicant or Mr. Falk. Is there currently a sign on the side? Because when I visited the site, I believe I saw the sign on what I would call the far-facing side of the street, not on the eastern side. And what's out there now?
That currently, this is Mr. Tuttle again. There is currently no sign up, we got approved for the sign to be put up. And then unfortunately, we shut down because of the COVID-19. So we have the sign in our facility, we just have not installed it as of yet. The one that was approved for the, for the front of the building.
Okay.
What we did, we applied for both of them. And then we were told we could only have one, so we said, okay, let's, we want to have some sort of signage up, let's get approved for the, for the one we're allowed on the front. And then, and then try and get a variance for the, for the one on the side. The actual, unfortunately, the side is actually more visible to the road as you're coming up the hill than, than the front of the building. So that's why our client would like to get signage on the side of the building.
It's true. Mr. Falk.
I'll just reiterate, Mr. Tuttle and Mr. Plath said that, you know, they, they did get a permit. I confirmed that with Marcia Wilkins of our staff, that they did get a signed permit for one sign that met the ordinance, and they just want this additional one on the other side of the building.
Okay. Kate, I see your hand up.
Madam Chairman, we are receiving a lot of feedback from somebody. Mr. Tuttle, do you have two lines open?
I don't, Mr., I know that Mr. Plath was on the other, on the other line.
Okay.
I mute, this is, this is Mr. Plath, I muted because of all the feedback, so I don't believe it's coming from me.
Do you want me to, let me turn the volume down, maybe that'll help.
Yeah.
That seems good.
You still hear some feedback, so it must be your line.
I'll hit mute until I, until I have to speak.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any?
Who is calling user 5?
That's not JP.
No, he was, well, he, well.
No, he was two, but then during break, I probably reconnected.
JP is five.
Yeah. So there's any other questions? I see no other questions. Is anyone else on or here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Kate, you're muted.
Wrong one, thank you. Madam Chair, I see no hands raised, and I've been given no messages in chat.
Thank you. Is there anyone here with any comments, questions, concerns, issues?
Madam Chair, I see no hands raised for this matter either.
Thank you very much. Seeing there's no... Seeing there's no one here, I would like to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Okay, let's see. Mr. Lionel, any discussion, sir?
No.
Okay, Mr. Boucher.
No, I don't have any discussion. I, I, I'm comfortable with the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I'm in support. I think the nature of this being on the corner, a facade being the one noted that usually much more the view for those that are driving. And that there was some manner of signage that's been in place for a while, even if it was perhaps not permitted is, it still, to me, leads further credence to this being a reasonable request.
Mr. Courier.
Well, I guess I, you know, I struggle with this a bit. I mean, I think it's a, it's a very predominant sign, a good sign that's there now. I, I, you know, I, I can't help but feel that, you know, let's get the max here and, you know, get a good sign and then seek a little more. I think maybe there could have been an overall plan in the first place that could address the two corners. So I, I struggle. I certainly see the desire. I, I don't, I'm not finding the need. You know, I think the formula that the city has and Carter's calculation is correct. And I think that's good enough. That's where I'm at on it.
Okay, Mr. Minkara.
So following Mr. Courier's line of thinking, I struggle with this also. Corner buildings are not unusual. Some ordinances contemplate and provide extra provisions for corner buildings ours doesn't. So I hesitate to adopt a de facto zoning amendment that says corner buildings can double the signage. What, what does help me over a little, I can't say I get over, but what, what certainly helps me is, is just the fact of where it's located. On Amherst Street, too often, you, by the time you realize where a business is, you've passed it. And there is, to me, a safety factor there, or you come to a sudden stop and, you know, try to turn in. But it's a very confusing street. It can be unclear to see where individual businesses are located. So for, for that reason, that, that helps me get over. I don't know if it entirely gets me over, but it helps me get over. But I do have that concern as we have an ordinance. It does have some parameters. This isn't a slight deviation. It is a doubling that they're asking for.
Thank you. Scott, you can't speak during this. This is the board having its deliberations. The public hearing is over.
Sorry.
Mr. Knakis, are you still with us?
I am.
Any discussion?
I think I'm in support of this, even though it's a larger deviation from the ordinance. There's been a lot of restaurant turnover on that corner lot there. It'd be nice to have something stick around if for slightly larger sign is what it takes to keep something in there, then I think we should grant the variance.
Thank you. And I concur with my fellow board members. I remember the former restaurant that was there. I remember the awning. And I can't remember where the words were, whether it was on the big part or the little flat part. But like Mr. Minkara mentioned, coming up, especially in that section, you come up and all of a sudden, you know, you notice, oh, that's where it is. It's in that strip mall. And you want to stop and turn. And sometimes you make it and sometimes you don't. So the extra signage makes logical common sense because, as Mr. Tuttle stated, you see that sign on the side way before you see the other sign. It's just much clearer. It's much more visible. Okay, so hearing and having said all this, I would like to entertain a motion from someone, someone offer, Mr. Lionel, thank you.
See if I can get through this. It's way past my bedtime. Okay, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Nashua 449 Realty Ventures LLC, care of Charles River Realty Group. Applicant is Stones Number One Social. Address 449 Amherst Street, Sheet H, Lot 35. Requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-108, C1, to exceed maximum wall sign area, 45.87 feet, square feet permitted. One existing sign at 43.75 square feet. One additional 43.75 square foot sign wall, sign, wall sign requested, proposed for a total of 87 and a half square feet. This is in the GB Zone Ward 2. The board finds the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, giving special conditions to the property being a corner lot, corner building. And the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board believes this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We feel it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. Therefore, I make a motion to approve this area variance.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Okay. Mr. Courier.
I prefer not to make a second on this motion.
No, there was a second made. I'm asking for your vote, sir.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Who made
Shaw seconded it.
Okay, great. I vote opposed to this motion.
Okay. Mr. Lionel.
I am in favor of the motion.
Mr. Shaw.
I am in favor.
Mr. Boucher.
I'm in favor.
And myself, Mary Ann McKay, I'm also in favor. That's four votes in the affirmative, one in the negative, and that was Mr. Courier who voted in the negative. Mr. Tuttle, Mr. Plath, congratulations. The variance, the special, yeah, variance has been granted. Like we tell everyone, there can be an appeal, 30 days window. If you have any questions, any issues, concerns, please reach out to Mr. Falk and he will help you. Thank you very much for hanging this stuff with us. We made it. We're still on the same day. We are still on the 28th. 15 minutes, but we made it. So thank you. Stay safe and you are free to leave.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
We have minutes. We want to get finished and through with our minutes. Minutes of March 10th, 2020, Mr. Lionel was acting chair in my absence. Does anyone see any issues with the minutes? Then I will entertain a motion on the minutes. And I wasn't here, Carter, so can I have Mr. Knakis' vote?
You can vote on them.
I can vote on them?
Just because you were there, yeah, you could vote.
We do this all the time.
Yeah.
Just checking. All right, do I have a motion to accept the minutes, Mr. Shaw? I saw your hand go first. And Mr. Lionel, I saw your hand, so I accept your second. Mr. Courier.
I vote in approval of the minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
Approve.
Mr. Shaw.
Approve.
Mr. Boucher. And myself, Mary Ann McKay, I approve. That's five to zero, all in favor. I don't see, we don't have an agenda for the next time, correct, Carter?
We have one.
Madam Chair, we should have, should have gotten one. Yeah, I, I can send that out to you. It was just
I might have it. Let me see where I was. Oh.
Cases.
No, I had, for
We have six cases.
No, I, what I have.
Let me see if I can forward.
Not this one. The one I have in here said it was published on April 14th.
No.
Exactly.
This would be, okay, I just sent it. Should be in your email. I must have missed you in my email blast. My apologies.
So you all have the new agenda? Did you send it to my email or do you put it up on the screen, Kate?
I can put it up on the screen. That may be easier. A second.
Oh, Steve had a kitty join him. What's your kitty's name? We have to acknowledge the kitty. You're muted, Steve.
I'll do it.
He did it and then somebody undid it. Okay, there he is.
Oh, this is Telsi.
Oh, hi. Well, we have to acknowledge who's in the room with us.
Well, she wasn't when I, when I started.
I know.
That's what they want to do.
Yes, they do. They're independent. She's beautiful. Um, okay, I can, can you?
Is that, is that big enough?
It's big enough, but I don't see the top of it. I'm, you're starting at number one. Okay. Bowing publish, blah, 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 blah.
That's just the typical stuff in the beginning.
Yep, okay. And how many cases are here?
Six.
Six.
Six cases?
Countryside Drive, which is way down off of West Tal Street. We have one on Broad Street. Birchwood, which is in the north end, kind of. And we've got Riviere, Amherst Street, and Scott.
Okay. And does anybody see any regional impact in any of these cases?
No.
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 Okay. I'm done. No regional impact. I guess the last thing we have to do is adjourn, correct?
Yep.
Our next meeting is May 12th. I'm assuming we're going to be virtual. And Mr. Lionel, I saw your hand.
Move to adjourn.
And Mr. Shaw, you seconded it? And okay, Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Courier.
I vote to adjourn. Who was the second and motion on the adjournment?
Motion was Mr. Lionel. Second was Mr. Shaw. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Yep.
And Mary Ann McKay votes yes. Folks, we are adjourned and it is 11:50 PM. We did it on the 28th. Thanks, team.
That was great, everybody. We did it. First round of X meeting went very successfully.